All right. Got us now. Thank you, Mr. Gatsky. Good evening. The March 11th, 2025 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 331315 of the Ohio Revised Code. Please place your mobile phones on silent mode for the meeting. Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Iapolo.
Here.
Ms. Jessely.
Here.
Ms. Marchaza.
Present.
Ms. Payne.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Thank you and please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one adjustment to our agenda tonight, and Mr. Heath will speak on that.
So before we begin tonight's agenda, I need to make one adjustment to, um, to the agenda, because we passed the bathroom bill policy under the emergency clause at our last meeting, we do not need to have a second reading or vote on that policy as it's stated, uh, under the Board of Education Report and Recommendations on the Agenda this evening, so that can be stricken.
So that is three separate policies that we did under emergency last time, 2260.02, single gender classes and activities, and, let's see, my numbers, 2260.0, no, I just read that one, 2340, field and other district sponsored trips, and then finally, 7421, restrooms, locker rooms, shower rooms, and changing rooms. I understand you may have signed up for the first reading on that policy. If you did, um, we're just gonna go ahead and just know that we've already voted on it, we passed, we passed it unanimously, um, through emergency, so we have that policy in place. If you do still want to speak on it, though, you can, you can't speak at the first session if you signed up that way. Sorry for the confusion and thank you. I would like to welcome everyone to the March 11th, 2025 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the District's Paperless Board of Education Agenda System Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the Superintendent and Chief Financial Officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda when the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it be an item on the agenda or another topic. To participate in the Hearing of the Public section, interested speakers must sign up prior to the start of the meeting. Signups are available online through the school district's website or onsite prior to the start of the meeting. You will be called to the microphone when it is your turn to speak. At that time, we ask that you please state your name and address questions to the board president. Each person may speak only once per segment and comments are limited to three minutes. The purpose of the Hearing of the Public is for our community members to address the board. The board continues to welcome feedback from the community as an important component to conducting business. This is an information gathering opportunity for the board and administration so we can work to best serve our community. If at the end of public participation, we do not make a statement, please know this does not demonstrate a lack of care for comments shared by our community. Rather, we want to be thoughtful in our approach and we will provide a response in a timely manner when appropriate. In an effort to maintain an orderly meeting based on Ohio Revised Code 2917.12 and Board Policy 169.1, any person doing any act which obstructs or interferes with the conduct or orderly progress of the board meeting will be warned and/or removed from the meeting. The meeting is being shown live and can be viewed on demand on our YouTube channel, Cardinal TV, Mentor Ohio. Thank you. And at this time, we will have our district highlights and recognitions. Mr. Heath.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade. Tonight, we are recognizing several students for their outstanding achievements. I'd like to start this evening by inviting Mr. Hammond to the podium to begin the presentations.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Heath and Mr. Wade. This evening, it gives me great pleasure to recognize the grade level Spelling Bee Champions based on our district competition that culminated on January 23rd, 2025. These students excelled at the building level by winning their respective spell downs and before moving on to our district competition. Congratulations to the following students, and students, as I read your name, come on up to the stage, have a certificate, come on across the front, shake the board members' hands, and you can exit on the stairs at the other side. All right? Fourth grade champion from Ridge Elementary, Tin Azinovich. Fifth grade champion from Hopkins, Gianna Jankar. Sixth grade runner-up from Memorial, August Southworth. Sixth grade champion from Shore Middle School, Tia Geisler. Seventh grade runner-up from Shore Middle School, Liam Stahlhuth. And I'm gonna come back to our seventh grade champion in just a minute, because you're gonna see why. Eighth grade runner-up from Shore Middle School, Reese Clark. Eighth grade champion and district runner-up from Memorial, Dylan Fedor, and Dylan was also the seventh grade champion last year, so congratulations to him. And last but not least, our seventh grade champion from Memorial, uh, his name is Sebastian Gill, but hang on. He was not only our, our seventh grade champion, he was our district champion, come on up, Sebastian, you can make your way. District champion, he's our Lake County Spelling Bee champion, and on February 28th, he won the Tri-County Spelling Bee, which qualifies him to compete at the Scripps National Spelling Bee Championship in Washington DC, May 26th to the 30th. Congratulations to all these students.
Congratulations, Sebastian, and good luck. Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, at this time, I would like to invite Ms. Kane to the podium for the Art Award Recognitions. Seeing none, we will move on. Madam President, members of the board, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Wade for the Auditor of State presentation.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Heath, I would ask that Katie Simo, the Northeast Ohio Regional Liaison from the Auditor of State's Office, join me on the stage.
Hello, thank you, and good evening. My name is Katie Simo, I'm the Northeast Ohio Representative for the Auditor of State's Office, and it is my pleasure to be here this evening to present the Mentor Exempted Village School District, Bill Wade, his staff, as well as the board, um, and the administration with the Ohio Auditor of State Award with Distinction for Fiscal Year 2024. Um, and this is actually the third year in a row that the Mentor Cities, or the Mentor Exempted City School District is actually receiving this award, um, so this is very exciting. Each year that you get the award is, it just shows that basically you got a clean audit, everything was filed on time, um, and honestly, only about 2% to 3% of our 6,000 agencies at the Auditor of State's Office receive this award, so it is really, um, an outstanding award, um, and shows just all the dedication, hard work that goes into it, um, and so, on behalf of Auditor of State, Keith Faber, we want to thank you for all of your hard work and congratulations.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, of course.
Um, I would just like to take a moment to congratulate and sincerely thank our outstanding Treasury Department who's here with us tonight. Um, it's their hard work, their diligence, and their commitment to excellence in financial reporting and accountability that earn us this award each year. Their efforts have been instrumental in earning this award and a recognition that reflects the highest standards of fiscal responsibility and transparency for our community. This award is a testament to their dedication, their accuracy, and their professionalism that they demonstrate every day in managing our district funds and operations. Their meticulous attention to detail and commitment to sound financial stewardship ensure that we remain accountable to our stu-, uh, excuse me, students, staff, and most importantly, our community. I'm proud to work alongside such an incredible group of individuals who not only help me daily, but help our staff to make sure that we're protecting our district funds. So at this time, I would ask that they join me on stage. Uh, if we would have Mike Vacarello, Assistant Treasurer, join us on stage. We would have our Coordinator of Payroll, Glendine Epperson, our Payroll Specialist, Julie Pepka, our Grant Specialist, Karen Brant, our Account Clerk, Crystal Pierce, our Coordinator of Accounting, Mike Bowen, as well as our Administrative Assistant, Rachel Griffiths, Account Clerks, Tammy Rudler and Deb, if you guys would join me on stage, I would appreciate it.
Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, we have Mr. Tom Heck, Board Member from the ESC of the Western Reserve, uh, here with us this evening. I would like to invite him to the podium for the OSBA Student Achievement Presentation.
Thank you very much for letting me get on your agenda tonight. I appreciate that. So I am actually representing a gentleman by the name of Reno Kattipelli, who is the Northeast Region Manager for OSBA. He unfortunately could not be here tonight, but, uh, it is very important that, that we recognize the, the various schools as they participate in things that, that really, uh, highlight the, the success of different, uh, districts around the state, so it's important that, that, that this certificate, even if Reno can't be here, it's important that we, we go ahead and present this. So I'm just gonna go ahead and read the certificate. It's a Certificate of Achievement, the Ohio School Boards Association, Student Achievement Fair Exhibitor, Presented to Mentor Schools, Allied Health, that was on November 11th, 2024, signed by Reno Kattipelli and Bruce Alexander, who's the, who was the Region President at that time. So if I, if I could, Reno would like a, um, a picture, I think, to prove that I've actually done this. So if I could infringe on, um, thank you very much, and I'm gonna, I'm wondering if you might-
Is this gonna be like a selfie?
Well, it could be. I'm wondering if you might be our photographer.
I'll take a few. One, two, three.
All right. Thank you so much, though.
You're welcome. You bet. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Approval of Minutes. Do I have a motion? So moved? Second. Any discussion? Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Jessely.
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion's carry five zero.
Next, we have Hearing of the Public on Agenda Items Only.
Our first speaker tonight is Jaclyn McCormick.
Oh, thank you. On the agenda tonight is the policy regarding the use of the Cardinal Nation Newspaper Club led by liberal government teacher Steve Couch, who has had many complaints against him in his capacity as a government teacher and an advisor to this club. Here's a post on his social media from Ja-, July of 20, uh, 22nd, I'm sorry, July 22nd. Quote, "You can't be a patriot that loves the Constitution in this country and support Donald Trump, or anyone that enabled, defended, or aided him. At the same time, you can't pick."
I'm sorry, excuse me. We don't have the Cardinal Nation on our agenda tonight. We have a journalism class on the agenda.
I believe that's what Cardinal Nation is, it's journalism.
It's not a journalism class, it's an extracurricular. The policy that we're discussing, though, is, covers- I don't think it covers our, I don't think it covers an employee, and that isn't the method that we hear issues about an employee.
So I just need clarification as well. Is it about the issue of the employee, or is it the topic that's a problem? Because it is on the agenda for the policy for publications, so Ms. McCormick is allowed to speak about that.
She is allowed to speak about the topic, but we don't speak about our employees here. If there's an issue with an employee, we have a procedure for that.
Which, I agree, we do have a procedure for that.
It's not coming to the table. It's not coming in front of a board meeting.
So are you telling her she can't speak on that? I, I just want a clarification, because I do believe that's something that we've been advised not to say, so. I just don't want us to get into any kind of legal-
I don't want to get into legal either, I just think it's extremely inappropriate and unfair to our staff, and I think I-
So you could ask her maybe not to speak about it, but you can't make her-
Could you, could you please not speak about our employees?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Another item on the agenda is the release time for religious instruction that Maggie, Ginny, and Lauren all pushed against when they indefinitely postponed the vote months ago. Now, they're forced to be in compliance with the law, but they are trying to make it as hard as possible to actually use the RTRI policy since they want to make it only available for lunch, recess, and study hall. It's not a good idea to make a bunch of Mentor Churches upset when you will rely on their congregation's support in order to pass a levy. Once again, we hit national news because of Lauren Marchaza's extreme liberal political views. Her legislative update where she pretended to be an attorney landed her on libs of TikTok, where our United States Senator Bernie Moreno was appalled and sent a letter encouraging our board to follow the executive orders. She and her liberal colleagues Maggie Cook and Ginny Jessely could cost the district over $5 million. Funny, they were so worried about our funding being at risk when it came to allowing boys and girls bathrooms and locker rooms. Cooks and Jessely voted against a resolution to uphold parental rights and go against the Title IX changes to allow boys and girls bathrooms and locker rooms. This resolution was given to all board members by the Ohio Board of Education when they passed a resolution on the topic. I also think it's hilarious that Lauren Marchaza brought up how much legal costs increased and tried to place it on Annie and Rose when they actually used legal counsel to protect the district against lawsuits arising from public speaking policies that were not in alignment with the law. When Maggie Cook tried stopping me from speaking, she could have earned the district some new litigation. Not tonight, but a different night. I'd like to know how much legal fees have incurred since Lauren's statements were made. I'm sure Maggie's letter back to our senator that didn't even address his questions was prepared by an attorney. Maybe, Lauren, you shouldn't throw stones if you live in a glass house. Keep making decisions that go against the community, and you'll see another levy fail. I'd like to remind everyone that Maggie and Ginny will be up for reelection in November. Maggie and Ginny, your votes are visible, and you're far too liberal for Mentor.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ashley Pendergast. Not seeing Ms. Pendergast, our next speaker is Brandon Towns.
Good evening. It's been a while since I've been here. This is regarding, uh, the journal discussions and executive orders. So, uh, for the past four years, at the very least, public comments have continued to devolve into a space of hostility rather than constructive discourse with the same divisive rhetoric against anti-DI, LGBT students, families, staff, minority students and families, and this misuse does not advance our district mission, it actually undermines it. Effective governance remains and requires meaningful, solution-driven communication, and not this performative outrage. I believe emails and structured forums provide ways to have thoughtful dialogue and discussion without allowing our meetings to be hijacked, um, with repetition and hostility for hours on end. To emphasize the emptiness of these ongoing attacks, I will now be using the remainder of my time in silence, symbolizing the void of substance that has filled this space for far too long. After my silence, I will have a final comment, and I will leave us for the rest of the meeting. And I urge the board to seriously consider eliminating public comments here at these meetings moving forward.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alex Fish. Thank you, Alex. Our next speaker is John Sanford.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Heath, Mr. Wade, I would like to address some comments towards Policy 5223, the RTRI issue that is on its first reading. Now that, now that the law has been passed and is not being litigated, Policy 5223 is both timely and well-crafted. It addresses the legal requirements while remaining true to the primary mission of the board, which is maintaining quality public education. I know it sometimes seems to get lost in the shuffle, but we must always keep this mission foremost in our minds. In that spirit, I would like to offer three minor modifications to the policy that was written. First, release time should not be permitted to interfere with remedial or makeup work, which some, which are sometimes addressed during study hall. Students who are receiving such services or who are falling behind should not be eligible for release time. Second, providers that fail to get students back to class on time should not be allowed to participate in the program. That can be done with administrative stuff, but I'm just saying it should be there. Also, I would recommend that if a student is returned in time but dawdles, as students sometimes do, they could lose their eligibility for release time. Third, if the providers take students during their lunch hour, they should be required to provide lunches for the students to ensure that students are able to continue their education after lunch without being hungry. Religious instruction should not be allowed to interfere with student nutrition. Again, I appreciate the timing of this policy proposal. We have tonight and before, and will continue- and will continue to hear rash and angry calls to prematurely write policy in response to executive orders or other legislation still in development before those orders have been through the court processes. These calls are nothing more than shameful political posturing from the radicalized segments of the community intended to preclude reasonable debate and to attack those that they dislike, as we have already heard. Such as trionics are misguided and, if followed, would impair the board's function. Fortunately, the majority of the board has, to date, successfully resisted the temptation to premature policymaking. Kudos to you for not succumbing to such misguided pressures. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Sednay. Thank you. Lindsay Wall. Thank you.
Madam President, Members of the Board, Mr. Heath, Mr. Wade, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My comments are regarding the second reading of the revisions to Policy 5223, release time for religious instruction during the school day. While I personally do not agree with releasing our kids for religious instruction during a school day, it is now the law, and of course, I know the district will comply with it. There are several points that I would like to help the board will include in the, uh, in the policy in order to prevent interruption of our kids' academic studies. They include, will release time only occur during lunch, recess? If a student has a special during lunch or recess, such as speech, uh, therapy or something on that line, will they be released? If a student is being held in from recess for failure to complete an assignment or as punishment, will they be released? How will a student with special needs be able to attend? What about a student that has an aide that works with them in the schools? How will lunches be handled for kids, especially ones with reduced and free lunches? And what happens if the kids are brought back to school late? These are a few of the questions I have. As you are all well aware, academics are the primary duty of our public schools. Anything else is secondary. I hope the board will be able to institute a policy that, while following the law, also places academics in the forefront. Additionally, congratulations to Mr. Bill 2% Wade for your third year State of Ohio Auditor's Award. And thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Angel Beck. Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Majakas.
Good evening. Sorry, I'm only five feet tall. A little, little tall. I'm speaking tonight on the agenda item for the executive orders and some of the false information and accusations that have been circulating in the community based on Ms. Marchaza's legislative report from the last meeting. I want to make two points for the community members in the board to be aware of. First, I would suggest that everybody listen to the March 2023 board meeting. I believe it's around the 2 hour and 35 minute mark. It's during a discussion about federal funding for school lunch programs being tied to federal guidance on Title IX protections. During that discussion, Mrs. Payne said a number of things, including, if we choose to do something different, which clearly implies that she did believe the board has the ability to not comply with federal guidance. During that discussion, she also mentioned that the federal funding was still less than 1% of the district budget and made a point of saying that no school had ever lost federal funding for not complying with federal guidance. So I'd strongly encourage people to listen to that meeting and hear those remarks yourself. Secondly, I really want to point out that it's very clear that the public statements that Mrs. Iopolo and Mrs. Payne made against Mrs. Cook and Mrs. Marchaza are retaliation for their unhappiness and not getting the board positions they wanted again this year. But I do want to make the point that it's not just board members who are the topics and subjects of these retaliatory actions. There's been an example of a pattern of these retaliatory actions that have been taken against numerous people who have spoken out in opposition to Mrs. Iopolo and Mrs. Payne, or who have simply done things that they didn't like. The targets of these retaliatory actions have included multiple employees in the Menter School District, a mentor resident who teaches in another district, a parent volunteer, and myself, both by having my employer contacted to complain about things that I have said, and a family member of Mrs. Payne repeatedly accusing me on social media of things that were verifiably false in an effort to defame me. Mrs. Iopolo has also clearly stated that she looks up people's political affiliations when they email the board. District employees have told us that they are afraid to speak out against what they are seeing and experiencing for fear of retaliation. And I'm sure that this will all be denied and probably be threatened to sue, they'll threaten to sue me, which happens quite a bit. But I do have properly obtained public records that support these claims, and I'd be happy to share them with anybody who would like to see them. Because as Mrs. Iopolo once said to a mentor resident, "I also keep records." I also want to point out to the community that Mrs. Iopolo and Mrs. Payne continue to restrict comments on their social media so that they do not hear opposing views, and they did that again with their comments about the executive orders. I bring this to the attention of the board and the residents of Menter tonight so that you are aware of what's been happening and to be aware of what the goal is, which is to intimidate and silence people who disagree with them. While this may be the current approach that's being taken at higher levels in the government to silence and punish the opposition, it has no place on the school board and does nothing to improve the quality of education in this district. Menter deserves better. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a couple of comments since I was directly mentioned in that. Just for clarification, I've never, I don't even know where you work, so I have never contacted your employer. Second, I just want clarification for the public. What, that March 2023 board meeting? Absolutely watch it. It's quite interesting because what she's talking about is a resolution that I put with another board member to protect girls from having boys enter their private spaces like their locker room or their bathroom. That's a safety issue, and I stand by my decision. Unfortunately, it was not passed. It also was matching the Ohio Board of Education's resolution, which we were all provided in January of that year, to uphold parental rights and push against Title IX expansion to allow boys and girls bathrooms and private spaces and locker rooms. So just wanting clarification on that.
Good evening, Mr. Heath, Members of the Board. Amy Freeman, we have two students who have graduated from Menter, and we have a current junior. I want to speak about the agenda item for perhaps establishing a journalism class. And I have a couple of comments about that and some questions. The first question would be, is the district thinking about merging Cardinal Nation into a journalism class? And if so, I would advocate against that for a couple of reasons. As you all know, our students are very ambitious. Right? They're loaded up with sports, part-time jobs, activities, clubs, heavy coursework. We have students traveling back and forth from their CTE programs. And I think that if we could keep Cardinal Nation separate as a club, we would have a greater opportunity for students to participate in the school newspaper as opposed to the participation in the school newspaper being limited to any students who can fit that journalism class in their schedules. And secondly, I would see the purpose of a journalism class versus the purpose of a school newspaper being two different things. Like, for example, your syllabus for journalism class, I would think would include media ethics, law, law and media, maybe some of the logistics and business aspects of producing something in print, probably some public relations, interviewing techniques, integrity of quoting. You would have quite a bit to fit into a high school journalism class beyond just using that for the purpose of publishing a high school newspaper. And for your high school newspaper, right now, our Cardinal Nation has a very organic feel to it. It's definitely something that is produced by the students. And you can see there's learning involved. You can see them trying out different ideas. And I think that, you know, it's a program. It's a club that's advised by an AP teacher. And it just produces something that really feels homegrown. So I would recommend, if we are going to establish a journalism class, that we just don't go ahead and fold Cardinal Nation into that, that the two could remain separate. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
David Lima, Litchfield Drive. Board President Cook, board members, Mr. Heath, Mr. Wade. The current flurry of executive orders, many of which are on hold or have been rejected outright by the courts, may impact local school boards like our own. Some executive orders target education and threaten the accessibility of resources for our students. All students need the development of skills and knowledge to prepare them for a fulfilling and productive life, the objective of education. These political motivated orders that serve to intimidate their targets, our public schools, center around diversity, equity, and inclusion, casting them as discriminatory when in reality, they provide the foundation for accessibility, accessibility for all students. Policy decisions that this board may consider merely based on the issuance of an executive order that may later be found to be unconstitutional would not only be premature, but irresponsible. I urge you not to create policy based on these frivolous executive orders that serve to threaten and intimidate much to the detriment of our students, this board, and our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Andrea Bliss. Not seen, Andrea. Our next speaker is Barbara Holshauser. Not seen, Barbara. Our last speaker is Ellen Freeman.
Hi, I'm Ellen Freeman. I'm an 11th grader at Menter High School, and I'm a member of Cardinal Nation. I'm here on behalf of our club to speak to you all about the journalism class. First, I would like to thank Mr. Heath, Mr. Crowe, and Board Member Marchaza for already collaborating with us when it comes to this new class. Our main concern right now is that, as you can see, I'm the only member from our club here, and that's because a lot of our club members are currently at a combined orchestra and Mannheim concert at St. Bead's, which I think is perfect evidence of just how busy we all are. Currently, there is no member of Cardinal Nation who would be able to fit this new journalism class into our schedule. And so currently, if the plan is to just turn Cardinal Nation into a class, which, based on our previous meetings with Mr. Heath and Mr. Crowe, it sounds like that is the plan, it would essentially be depriving all of us of that educational opportunity to write for the school newspaper. I also understand that there are possible plans to grandfather us all into the class so that maybe we would all get to still write for the class, even though we weren't in it. And I suppose, to an extent, that could work, even though I'm a little concerned about the logistics of that. But that only helps us who are currently in the club. We all have a lot of concerns about every future student who's going to get to walk through Menter High and about their opportunity to be a part of Cardinal Nation. As it stands, if it were turned just into a class with no extracurricular component, only students who could fit the class into their schedule would get that opportunity to exercise their right to free speech and free expression through the school newspaper. And I just don't feel as though that that is the most beneficial to our students. As a club, Cardinal Nation would love to see the creation of a journalism class to further those educational opportunities, but we also ask the board to consider keeping an extracurricular component with the class and allowing for students to be able to engage with one or the other or both. This is not unprecedented in any way. Currently, marching band, students can engage in just concert band, which is a class during the day. They can engage in both marching band and concert band. Or for students who are in CTE and CCP programs and can't be there during the day, they can just do marching band. Both the class and the extracurricular are operated by the same teacher, but it is completely okay for students to do just one or the other. And at the end of the day, they contribute to the same program. And we would really like to see something like that happen with the journalism class. We completely respect that the board wants to create this into a greater educational opportunity by creating a class, but we don't want to see future students get deprived of the ability to create in Cardinal Nation because they can't fit it into their course load. So Cardinal Nation is just asking you all to prioritize student free speech and help continue the club in some aspect. Thank you so much.
Next, we have our superintendent's report and recommendations.
Thanks for speaking, Ellen. That was phenomenal. I'm going to jump straight into the consent agenda. I've got comments prepared. I'm sure we've got some questions about some of the different things as we go through the consent agenda and then also when we get into the board business later on. So I'll leave my comments until those times. So, Madam President, Members of the Board, Mr. Wade, I have the following recommendations list to enter the consent agenda and recommend approval of items 6A1 listed under the consent agenda and recommend approval of items 6A1 through 6A4.
So moved. Second?
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Ayapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Madam President, Members of the Board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of the Brain Pop subscription renewal.
So moved. Second? Any discussion?
Yes. I don't know if, are we going to go individually with all of these or just do it into one individually? Okay. I have some concerns, and I had brought it up to Mr. Heath last week, that, you know, in looking at Brain Pop, while it has a lot of really great benefits to it, it does incorporate some and integrate DEI principles into both its content and organizational practices. So given the new state laws that are, we're going to be upheld to and executive orders, depending on what happens there, it feels like we're going to be spending a lot of money, I think this was $26,000, where we might only be able to pick and choose what parts of Brain Pop we can use. So in the spirit of wanting to save money and be resourceful, I have concerns about using some, and there's a lot of them in here, that have a lot of those things that I think we're not going to be able to use.
Which state laws were you referring to? Just want to be clear.
Parental rights.
Oh.
Yeah, they, they do have, I echo what Rose is saying. I do, when I first got on the board, I had some concerns about Brain Pop then, I still have them now. I did speak with Mr. Porter when I was on the, knew on the board about these Brain Pops. Some of them were about Black Lives Matter, some were sexuality, gender identity, pronouns in relation to, you know, gender identity. And given the Parents' Bill of Rights, it's been my stance all along, so it would be odd for me to vote for something that I've stated in the past, that I don't think we should use district funds for those types of political activism courses. And I understand that we are advising, you know, not to use that, but to Rose's point, to spend that much money on something that we don't get to use the full subscription of seems like it's a poor decision. And then also, I just don't think that those decisions align with our community. And when we're seeking support, I think it's really important that we get in alignment with them, so.
Just a couple of things to address that as well. Obviously, we're, we're going to be going through a series of subscription renewals, probably over the next couple of months too, as we're looking at all of our resources for the beginning of next school year. One of the things I will share with everyone as well, obviously, we're talking money situations too, so we're going to be cutting about $2 million each year over the next five years to make sure we meet the goals of our five-year forecast. So we're looking very, very closely at each one of our subscriptions to take a look at the usage rates, to see what is included in those subscriptions, also looking at what access our teachers have, what access our students have. And we're working closely with a lot of these vendors to limit those areas that we know do not necessarily meet some of the criteria that we're looking at here in our community. Brain Pop is one that, is one that's utilized heavily. We do have some safeguards in place. Also, as we jump into our Parents' Bill of Rights policy here in April, along with some of the administrative guidelines that we're looking at from the controversial issues policy, from the alternative assignments for opting out students that, that don't, their parents don't want them to participate or in one of those activities, we've got a couple of things and guardrails in place to make sure that that indeed is something that continues to take place in our classrooms. Within that administrative guideline, we've actually created a rubric that teachers will need to go through as they're looking through some of the resources that they're pulling into their classes. So Rose, I'll kind of toss in the Achieve 3000 and the Newzella conversations too, since those will be coming up here as well. Obviously, in those situations, there are leveled reading articles that are presented to students. We want to make sure that our teachers continue to vet what those articles are prior to their use and make sure that they're compliant with our policies. Obviously, that Parental Bill of Rights policy will, will be the next one that comes into play, that there's going to be a lot of things that tie into that. Those administrative guidelines around 2240 and 2240B, which we mentioned with the controversial issues and the opt-out students, those will be important things for us to consider too, and we will have that language here ready to go for our first reading here in April. The administrative guidelines, we'll be able to institute almost immediately because we want to make sure that we've got those, those in place. We started that process here today, just kind of talking through some of this with our principals during our principal meeting. We also talked about it pretty extensively in our administrative team meeting with the district, just making sure that we've got all of our ducks in a row with how those logistics are going to work for these different initiatives. So we are looking closely at our subscriptions. Those that are not being heavily used are going to be some that we will not be bringing to the table. Brain Pop happens to be one that we do have a lot of usage from, so that's the reason it's here this evening.
Mr. Heath, I had a quick question. The administrative guidelines that you're talking about, because we don't have like a specific policy right now that states that we will not, you know, allow access to these things, what policy are you attaching those guidelines to?
So we'll have two separate things. We'll have one that's going to be for policy 2240, the controversial issues, 2240B, which is the alternative assignments for opt-out students. And then once we have our discussions around the Parents' Bill of Rights policy, if there's additional administrative guidelines that we need with that, once we get that law passed or that policy passed, we can add some additional things there. I will include some of the administrative guidelines in the board update here this week so you guys can start to see some of that, some of that language here ahead of time. And again, those are things that can be instituted immediately. My plan is after this evening with, when we talk about the religious release time, I'm going to be doing an update to all staff since we have a workday on Friday with all of these updates so that everybody's ready to go with the religious release time, and then also making sure that we're ready to go for the April 9th starting time for the Parent Bill of Rights piece.
Okay. And would you consider, just because you mentioned that the administrative guidelines would be attached to the controversial issues policy, would you consider gender identity, sexuality, BLM, topics like that, white privilege, under the controversial issues? Would you consider a controversial topic?
So we'll, we'll have to take a look at all of those individually. A lot's obviously going to be dependent on what, what's coming out of some of the executive orders, what's coming out of some of the, the new federal laws as well. And we're going to be making sure that, like literally, we pulled a lot of language directly out of the House Bill 8 language that, that we have for those administrative guidelines as well. So you'll see a lot of that language directly in there with those definitions.
But we also know we don't need to rely on those, the law and the executive orders to make, to be protected.
To make some of those.
We can make those decisions based on what our community is asking for too.
Is there any more discussion about Brain Pop? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Ayapolo.
No.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
No.
Motion carries 3-2.
Madam President, Members of the Board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of the Frontline Education Subscription Renewal.
So moved. Second? Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Ayapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Madam President, Members of the Board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of the IE Observation License Renewal.
So moved. Second? Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Ayapolo.
No.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
No.
Motion carries 3-2.
Madam President, Members of the Board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of the McGraw-Hill Achieve 3000 Literacy Renewal.
So moved. Second? Any discussion? Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Ayapolo.
No.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
No.
Motion carries 3-2.
Madam President, Members of the Board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of the Newzella Subscription Renewal.
So moved. Second? Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to echo, obviously, I said this about the Brain Pop, but a teacher had sent this to me today, seeing that it was on the agenda, and she had access to celebrating Pride Month introduction to the LGBTQIA+ community and its entire, like, lesson for the students. So under the same reasons for Brain Pop, I can't support this one either.
I would guess I would just like to make a statement in general then, that I feel that our teachers are professional and they, they can make decisions using their professional judgment. I don't feel that they are doing anything wrong and indoctrinating. They can choose things that relate to their content, and we do have a current policy with controversial issues now that we can apply, and parents can opt their students out of assignments. So I can, I feel that these resources, and I use some of them myself, are very valuable, and there are many aspects to it, and what our teachers are using are valuable to their instruction.
Mr. Heath, the rubric that you referenced in Brain Pop, would that be similar to what would be used with any of these subscriptions?
Yeah, any, any supplemental resource, a teacher's going to have to use that, that policy and that, or that set of administrative guidelines and that rubric. And again, that'll be copied in, in what I share with you here on, on Friday as well, so you guys can take a look at that. We won't publish it, obviously, for maybe another week or so, but because I want you guys to be able to see it. And then that can be tweaked as needed as, as we kind of move through the legislative and legal process here with some of the other executive orders that we currently have.
And if a teacher had a question about any particular topic or item that's part of a subscription, they would check with their building administrator?
Yeah, so there's a whole procedure spelled out. It would start with the building level principal. If there are continued concerns there, it would go to the curriculum department, and then if there are continued concerns there, it comes to our administrative team and then ultimately my final decision.
And when those legal changes go into effect, will there be a communication with staff to guide them through that process so that they understand their rights and responsibilities in terms of selecting supplemental materials for their students?
Yeah, and that'll be part of our communication to all staff on Friday.
Thank you so much.
I just had a couple more comments. So I think the rubric is a great idea, but if it doesn't include that these topics are truly controversial, then it really doesn't do anything. So, which I think is pretty clear from at least sitting here for the last four years, we've heard people on both sides of those issues, all of these issues, you know, sexuality, gender identity, BLM, white privilege, those topics. I would definitely think common sense would say they're controversial. But if that's not included in the rubric, then the rubric doesn't really do any, any good. So I would have, I'd like to see it, and I'd like to-
Yeah, hopefully, that'll be clarified when you see that on Friday.
Yeah, and I'd like to have consensus from the board that those topics are truly controversial so that they would then apply to the policy. But I don't think we've had any consensus on that yet. I deem it as controversial, those topics. So that's all.
I agree.
Is there any more discussion on Newzella? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Ayapolo.
No.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
No.
Motion carries 3-2.
Madam President, Members of the Board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of the Photography Services Agreement with Prelude Photography.
So moved. Second? Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Ayapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Madam President, Members of the Board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of the Freckle Subscription Renewal.
So moved. Second? Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Ayapolo.
No.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
No.
Motion carries 3-2.
Madam President, Members of the Board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of the Photography Services Agreement with Shutterfly Life Touch LLC.
So moved. Second? Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Ayapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Madam President, Members of the Board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of Agenda Item C1 related to certified personnel and C2 through C4, all related to human resource matters.
So moved. Second? Is there any discussion?
Who was the second, sorry?
Me.
Thank you.
Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Ayapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
I'm also recommending approval of Agenda Item D related to administrative staff.
So moved. Second? Is there any discussion?
I just want to say I'm happy to see Coach Criss, it's going to be Assistant Principal Memorial, that, that's an awesome addition, and then sad to see, but bittersweet for Ms. Burwick leaving Hopkins next year. So she'll be missed.
Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Ayapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
This concludes my portion of tonight's agenda. Thank you.
Next, we have the Board of Education Report and Recommendations, and the first item under Board Business is the approval of a Mentor Public Library trustee. Do I have a motion to recommend Teresa Ackerman as our Mentor Public Library trustee? So moved. Second? Is there any discussion? Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Ayapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Next, we have the approval of a Board Member in Service attendance at the 2025 State Legislative Conference. Do I have a motion? So moved. Second? Is there any discussion?
I just, I had a question. So when we approve this, since it's not tied to a specific member, if we approve this in service, then any of us could attend, correct?
Yeah, so that's, that's what we need to discuss now. So because it's our legislative conference, I would recommend that Mrs. Marchaza attend because she's our legislative liaison, and if anyone else would also want to attend, that's what we're to discuss.
I, I think, Rose, it would be great if she would go as the legislative alternative.
Yeah, I think the, I was, I had already actually looked at that before I saw that it was going to be on the agenda, and it doesn't specifically state for, you know, legislative liaisons. It is for all board members, yeah. Yes, it's for, it's for all board members. I, I mean, that looks interesting, I think, and that's a great opportunity for us to sit down in front of all of our legislators. So I think anybody that can attend, I think that would be definitely worth it to be able to sit there, given what's coming with the budget. Yeah, I would, I would just like to suggest that maybe we limit it to two just for cost purposes, and if we go with legislative liaison and alternative, I think that that's reasonable. But, you know, it is a cost for us to all attend, travel, you know, there's costs incurred. We, I know we all go to OSBA, but as far as this conference, I mean, free for discussion, but I was just thinking maybe we would limit it to two.
I think it's, part of our role is being updated on legislative issues, so I don't have a problem with whoever wants to go. I'm not saying I'm for sure going, but I would like to have the opportunity if time allows, and I think it does look interesting. So I wouldn't want to take that away. I don't think we've ever done that with any OSBA courses that, you know, limited it, so.
Yeah, no, I, I think that it's very valuable for anyone to attend, but we do need to know so that we can be registered and we can decide with our costs. So I think just as a method of transparency, if, if more than these two would like to go, then we should speak up now.
Well, I would, I would like to attend. I just don't know. I have some personal issues going on in my family right now, so I'm not sure medically if, if I'll 100% be able to go, but it's very likely that I'll be able to go, so.
Mr. Heath, is there a deadline?
I've got to double check. I think there was a deadline to pull one off, which was today, but I'm not sure if there's a deadline to add. I think we've got two registrations right now.
Okay.
And Mr. Wade was planning on going, I think? Was that what was discussed?
Yes, yes, I was going to attend.
So what were, what will our costs be looking like if we all end up going? There would be one, two, three, four of us. Because we're, we're talking, I don't know what the cost-
The fee's 250 a da-
250 per person?
Person.
And then there's an overnight?
Yeah, we have, we have a fund specifically for these types of areas, so the board approves that every year at the organizational meeting.
Do we have enough to account for this and the Capitol Conference later this year?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I just want to bring up the point too, we do send more than just the board to Capitol Conference as well. So if we're going to start limiting here, we probably should limit there as well, so.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not opposed to anyone attending that wants to go, just to be clear. I just thought, you know, we are, we are being careful now, and, and if everyone wants to go, they, you know, they certainly can, but my motion was, was really to limit it to two just for the cost.
So you're motioning, did you say you're motioning it?
We have, we have elected people. I would like, yes, I guess I would. I'd like to motion to limit it to two just for this conference because of, in light of the issues. And anyone could go on their own. But I'd like to limit it to two for this conference.
I think it's quite interesting that you're trying to limit this conference, where we get to sit with our state legislators, to just two, when we've never done that in the past. It seems like you're quite trying to block folks sitting up here from going.
Well, I don't think we've ever gone to this conference before, have we? Yeah, so this is, I mean, this is a new conference.
All the more reason we should.
Exactly, all the more reason to go.
Well, I'm just saying, there is no precedent. So I think she's trying to set one, is what she's saying.
Well, let's just put it, let's just approve it for everybody and then go home and check with families, see who can make it. And, you know, it might be a moot point. I mean, we're arguing over nothing, but I don't think it's fair to limit.
I agree.
So how many am I looking for? Five?
I mean, we can just approve five and then get back to bill.
I mean, I'm happy to give, I can give my seat up to somebody, that's fine.
Mr. Wade, I do think it's important for you to be honestly, you know, this is budget season, and I can't see you. But I think it's important to have you on hand for specific questions around our budget. If we're talking to legislators, you know, knowing about, you know, the details around our cash balance, knowing how the changes in the budget are going to affect our district in our five-year forecast, I think those are really important to have you on hand for.
Happy to attend. I think it's important that we all engage with our legislators, particularly during this budget season.
I would agree with that. Mr. Wade, are you part of, is it COSPA? What, because OSBA is, you know, it does include different, different, what is it? Other for CFOs and superintendents? What is the one for superintendents as well? There's a different one.
BASA.
Yeah, they're BASA, we're OASBO.
OASBO, okay. So OASBO, do they offer something like similar to this?
We partnered with OSBA for this event.
Okay, so OASBO and OSBA are putting this on, which would make sense for you to go as well because if you're, you know, part of OASBO, okay. Because OSBA is, I mean, the intention is that it's for school board members. So I don't think we should be blocking any school board members from going. I think it would be wise for us to have as many of us that could go.
That's fine, I respect that. Mr. Heath, could you please just email us as soon as you find out what the deadline would be so that anyone on the board that is interested in attending can, you know, give their reply as soon as possible?
Okay.
So if we could go ahead and vote then to approve attendance, I didn't hear a second on my motion, so we're gonna let that die. And we're just recommending attendance for Board Member in Service attendance at the State Legislative Conference. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
I don't know that we need any more discussion? No? All right, Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Jessely.
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries five-zero.
Next, we have a first reading of the Mentor Board of Education Neola Policy. And because this is a first reading, no vote is necessary. But I know that there were, we want to have some discussion on. So this is the release time policy. This is Policy 5223, Release Time for Religious Instruction During the School Day. Do I have any discussion?
I have some comments that I just wanted to make in reference to this. A couple things, just first, I would like to motion to strike through some of the verbiage in here, specifically the last option where it says, "Any private entity providing religious instruction during the school day must agree that it will not provide participating students with any materials, snacks, clothing, candies, trinkets, or other items for their return to school. The district will not release students for religious instruction, release time to any private provider that fails to adhere to this prohibition." So I would like to strike through that also. And then I'll give my reasons in a minute. I just want to make sure I have this.
Okay, so we have a motion on the, you want to go ahead and we'll vote on this?
Well, it's a couple different things. So that's one of the amendments. I'd like to amend several different sections. So I'm gonna just do it all in one amendment, one motion.
Do you want to vote on them separately, or do you want to vote on everything?
We could do them all at once, unless, I mean, once there's discussion.
Can I get a copy of this policy, Mr. Heath?
Yeah, I'll send it to you right now.
Thank you.
I'd also like to change where it makes all courses as core curriculum, and I would like to change that because I don't believe all courses, including electives, are core curriculum, and it doesn't match our policy handbook, but I'll get into that in a minute. I would like to change it to, "The board deems English, Language Arts, Mathematics, Science, History, Government, and Social Studies as core curriculum."
Could you repeat that so I can?
Yep, yep, it's, so I'd like to change it to, "The board deems English, Language Arts, Mathematics, Science, History, Government, and Social Studies as core curriculum."
English, Language Arts, Math, Science, Social Studies?
History, so, Math, Science, History, Government, and Social Studies.
Let me repeat that back one more time. English, Language Arts, Math, Science, History, Government, and Social Studies.
Yep, as core curriculum. And then I would like to strike through where it says, "Release time instructions shall be limited to lunch, recess, and/or study hall times established at each school building." So now I'm gonna give you the reasons why.
Okay, one moment so I can have this motion ready. Strike through, repeat that last for me.
I'd like to strike through, "Release time instructions shall be limited to lunch, recess, and/or study hall times established at each school building."
Strike through, "Release time instructions shall be limited to..."
And then do I have to wait until?
What line is this? Oh, the bottom of the page, "Limited to lunch, recess."
Yes, yep, that, because those look like they're options. I've been kind of, well, do you want me to go over the discussion yet? Or do we need a second first?
We need a second.
I second that.
Okay, now can I have the floor back to explain why I'm doing, wanting these changes?
Sure.
Can we just slow down for just a second for me, please? Because I gotta get all this in the minutes correctly. So you struck, "Any private entity providing religious instruction during the school day must agree it will not provide participating students..." dot, 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 right?
Yeah, that option, I'm not choosing that option, so I'd strike through it.
Right here.
Yeah.
The second is...
The other option above it that's in green, strike through that whole thing.
That, it's at the bottom of the...
So, yep, got it. So the other one you're striking through as well. Where is, where did you want it, where's the curriculum piece in this?
That's in the new language in, that's in green. It's like the middle of the first page. It says, "Students shall not be excused from a core curriculum subject course to attend release time instruction." I'm okay with that. But then when we go on to say, "The board deems all graded courses to be core curriculum, including but not limited to courses that have state-approved learning standards," because then we're covering music and all the other things that are electives.
Do you want to strike that and change it to the language that you had, correct?
Yes, yeah.
And the language is, "The board shall deem..."
Yeah, I got that, thank you.
"English, Language Arts, Math, Science, History, Government, Social Studies as core curriculum."
And then, let me know when you're ready.
And then, Ms. Iapolo, second. Got it.
All right, we're into discussion on that.
Okay, can I give it, I have the floor still so I can explain. Okay, so a couple different things. The first thing that stood out to me was the bottom of that second page where it says, you know, "If you go to religious instruction, you can't come back with anything." A lot of times, whether it's religious instruction for Christianity or there could be religious instruction for any sincerely-held religious belief, they're probably gonna have something that they bring back, whether it's a flyer, something that they worked on, that they colored, something, you know, that they wrote. And, or even, I mean, it could be, you know, something like the Bible. And I don't think we want to get into the, you know, nitty-gritty about you can't bring that back, especially when there's some constitutional basis there that we have to really be careful with. So I think we're kind of digging in too deep into that one with that language. I think it's too restrictive. Then the other change about it, making all classes basically core curriculum, I just don't think, I think that's inherently wrong. I think it doesn't match any other language that we see. For instance, in the, let me see, I think it was the Student Handbook. But it was, "The Middle School Program of Studies for 2024, '25, '26,' all of those. We have this, for example, the sixth grade program. We have two sections. We have like, and it doesn't say core, but we have required. And then we have electives. And I think there's a clear distinction between the two. We have chorus under elective, we have band under elective, art under elective. So it's odd to me that this is the first time that we're gonna call everything core. And it seems like the purpose of that is to really restrict people from using this, this policy or this bill that passed. The intention of the bill was to allow for freedom of religion even during school hours. So I think that these changes go inherently against that bill and the intention of the bill. I also, the reason why I picked out that language for those core classes is a lot of it's from this, the Required Program Guide for our middle schools. And I'm sure there's one for the high school as well. But it also matches, as many of you know, I do homeschool my kids. I know it's been brought up before, but, and in order, Ohio Revised Code does require even homeschoolers to sign off. And we do send it to the superintendent for him to sign off in the beginning of the year. And it lists the classes that they deem as necessary. And those classes, that verbiage that I gave you, matches what's in our sixth grade, you know, middle school programs and does match that language from the Ohio Revised Code that requires even home educators to include those core classes in their curriculum. So those are just my reasons why I wanted to make those changes. I know we have at least six churches in the area that are involved in trying to use a program, a policy like this. And I don't, you know, from discussing it with some folks who are in that committee and some of the church leaders, I think this would be very restrictive and it wouldn't be received very well.
Yeah, I seconded the motion because, I mean, I have a lot of reasons similar to Annie's to why I don't, I think, I don't agree with some of the language. But really, basically, what we learned last month when we did the bathroom policy is less is more. And so I think that same message should apply tonight to this. And it's really too restrictive. And, you know, we had a 5-0 vote last week, last month because we didn't want to strike that overly detailed language because it lesses more. So I think we should just, you know, be consistent. And I think we're covered. I mean, the old policy, we could have been covered with just changing made a shell, and we would have been good. So I just think, you know, I don't think we need to have all that language. I can, depending on, you know, I can argue that beyond the reasons why, like Annie said. But just from a policy-language standpoint, I think less is more. And we can, this policy would be nice and strong without, with the strikings that we're talking about.
Is there any more discussion for the motion that's on the floor?
I disagree 100%. If we are paying subject specialists to teach K-12 scope-and-sequence curriculum, whether it's STEM, the fine arts, any of the physical education, I think those are important, that we meet the community's expectation of their investment in our students' well-rounded education. I think it would be virtually impossible to manage something that is all over the map. How does a teacher, let's say a STEM teacher, where her student or his student is going to be out weekly or intermittently, how does that student get to benefit from that same sequential learning? I think it's just a negative for our students. There's a chunk of time in the middle of the day that would make some kind of a cohesive, coherent religious release time for those families who wish to have it. And bringing back flyers, t-shirts, snacks, trinkets, whatever it might be, that's been roundly criticized in lots of articles that have been written regarding various other districts' experiences to the extent that some retracted the policy that they had that was supporting it originally, prior to the law, being changed and being required to have religious release time. So I feel that the policy as it's written is fair and clear and gives any of those entities that wish to provide religious instruction for students to have a reasonable target for their timing. And it also makes sure that you're not gonna have kids coming and going throughout the school day. I think it would be just an undue burden to our office staff to make sure that they're tracking students who are coming and going. It needs to be confined to a predictable and reasonable amount of time, that it's not just a disruption that could be anytime from 8:00 in the morning till 3:30 in the afternoon.
Can I ask, Janie, is your issue with them leaving at all, or when in the day they leave?
When in the day. We're required to have this.
How is it less of a, how is it less of a convenience if they leave during lunch and recess versus if they leave at the end of the day or before?
I always thought end of the day would be fine, but they made that clear.
No, I mean, just not, not, I mean, coming back. But what is the difference of when? How is it less of an inconvenience?
The when means that during the lunch periods, the lunch and recess periods are in the center part of the day. That would be the only time that the, whoever's gonna be responsible for making sure kids are called down, signed out, and then signed back in, that, if you've ever been in an elementary office and you watch, you know, kids have to leave for a dental appointment, there's just a lot going on. I think it would be grossly unfair for the office staff to have these regular movements of students anytime during the day, any day of the week. If it's confined to that piece of time, that's reasonable. That means that they can make sure that they've got the lunches and coats and all that other stuff accounted for. Most importantly, students signing in and signing out. That's our core legal responsibility, is to track and have an accurate record of attendance and who's in the building in case of an emergency, whatever it might be. I can't imagine why anybody would want their child to miss out on graded curriculum that offers them expansive opportunities for growth and learning across a variety of disciplines.
Well, we don't get to make that decision because it's the law and the parents just have to decide. But what you're saying with signing out, no matter what, someone at the office is signing everyone out, whether it's at lunch, in recess, or whether it's later. So I think the important thing with this policy is to make it, we don't want it too restrictive, and then let the churches and individual buildings principals figure this out because this is brand-new. We don't know. But the fact that you're making it virtually impossible for it to happen, and that's not what the law intended.
and that's not what the law intended. So, you know, we, at this point, it's a law. We don't get to dictate whether we think it's going to be inconvenient, whether we think it's needed, whether we think students should miss out on music. That's the parent's decision, and it's law, that's settled. Our job.
Nope, 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 sorry. I have to stop you there.
Excuse me.
I have to stop you there, because that's not true.
Sorry, I have the floor.
The law is that we are to collaborate.
Mrs. Marchaza, let Mrs. April finish.
Thank you. So I think what we have to do is we have to remember that, first of all, the move to change graded classes to core classes is only being done because of this law. It's only being done for this policy. We know that, I mean, obviously electives are important, and we need them, we love them, but there's a reason that they're not considered core with O D W, okay? There have been districts, Tom Hack used to be at Riverside, I think you were on the board when they had some financial issues and they couldn't have specials, and that's allowed because it's not considered core. Changing those to core classes is disproportionately affecting students who want to take advantage of that, and that is not the intent of the law, and I think we just need to be, you don't have to agree with it, we can take it step by step. Administrative guidelines could eventually help if we seek run into problems, but to right off, out of the gate, to make it so restrictive is opening us up to lawsuits. So.
So now I'm going to have to correct you. The laws that we have to collaborate, it is still up to the board to decide if it's lunch and, and in fact, Mrs. Cook, didn't you speak to a LifeWise representative at the conference, Capitol Conference?
Yes, I did.
And what did they say about the timing they preferred? Didn't they say they preferred lunchtime?
They said that they preferred, and it was most common for lunchtime, study hall, and recess.
So it's possible.
It was possible, and they said most of their districts did that.
So it is, it is also up to us to decide how this works. That's what the law says, that we collaborate, not that parents get to decide when to pull out the kids. So to be clear.
No, I'm not saying anything you didn't, you're not saying anything I didn't say.
Okay.
Okay, if everyone has a chance to speak, and then we can go around. I have to disagree with some of those edits as well. It is the law to have religious release time, and I will respect that, and we can follow a policy, but our main duty is to educate, and I want to protect the instructional time. And I think that by limiting it to lunch, recess, and study halls, we're protecting our educational time and still allowing religious release time for anyone that wishes to do that. I respect that parents have the ability to take religious release time, you know, I hope that it's a valuable addition to the program, but I don't want it to infringe upon any of our instructional time. And I feel that our taxpayers, as we are paying teachers to go through these, to provide these classes, and we want our children to be well-rounded and to have the ability to be a part of all of these lessons, and I don't want to infringe upon that. Lunch, recess, and study hall is appropriate, and it is reasonable, and many districts do that.
Mrs. Cook, would you, just because you said you don't agree with all of them, are you okay with striking through where they can't bring back anything? Since you said not all of them, so which ones do you agree with? What edits do you agree with?
I agree. I don't agree with any of your edits. I don't agree that they should be bringing back snacks, candies, trinkets. Now, do, if they bring back a material from the church and it stays in their bag, I find that reasonable. You know, like, a worksheet that they did, a Bible, a lesson, and it stays in their bag, I would be agreeable to materials.
Okay, so you would be, you would be.
To strike the word materials.
At least in agreement to strike materials.
I would be.
Okay. I guess, I don't know how that works, but since you're agreeing to that, I think it's better than nothing in that section. Maybe that would be a separate motion. So I just wanted clarification on that. And then, just a couple other points. I do think this is pretty restrictive. I do know that some of the folks do use recess, and for LifeWise, I've had extensive discussions with them. And, you know, my church is involved in the one for Mener. So I'm pretty kept up to date on what they're trying to accomplish. And I do know that some schools have, like, right across the street, they have something. That makes sense, that would be recess and lunch, but I think that in our situation, with us having so many buildings, I don't think we should be so restrictive, because it could prevent us from allowing people to take advantage of this policy. And I think that goes against the intent of the bill, which is to allow parents to have that religious, you know, freedom. I, like I said, I'm supportive of not pulling these kids out during their core classes. I do have some concerns as to why we're choosing this language. I know that I was emailed, you guys probably emailed it too, Parents Against LifeWise Group, they are recommending language like this, so did the O E A who fought actively against the bill passing. There's a pretty left-leaning group called Honesty for Ohio Education, they also are recommending, they have a whole toolkit where they're recommending verbiage just like this, with the goal to restrict folks from using it. So I guess, Mr. Heath, can you, because I know this, this is a board discussion, but you chose these options, so can you go over why you chose these options?
Sure. Just a couple of things that we discussed. Number one, we wanted to maximize the instructional time. And number two, we wanted to make sure that we didn't limit the amount of time that potentially could have been limited with some of the options that are in there. For example, the number of days per week, quarter, semester, year, we took that out. If an organization wants to do this five days a week, knock yourself out. That's allowable. That's why we thought, okay, where's, again, what I always try to do here is find where that middle-of-the-road piece is. We want to maximize the instructional time, and we want to make sure that we are not restricting what the intent of the law is, and that's why we didn't put any of that language in here. Those were the two big things. Plus, the work that we have done already is trying to identify what times during the day, so that as soon as organizations, as soon as we pass this and organizations are reaching out, we've got a document we can go straight to and say, hey, okay, here's this grade level, this building, at this time, and how do you, how do we want to work with them? And I think a lot of that, we talked in our principal meeting today about this a little bit, too, and, you know, if there are things that I can control as much as possible coming through my office, that way it takes it off the buildings. I want to be able to do that, that way it's consistent across the board, too. The only changes that may be a little bit different from one building to the next will be the check-in, check-out procedures, and we'll work with principals over the next month to get those details hammered out.
Who is the "we"? When you said "we," is that like the principals, because you said we discussed it, is that the principals or admin group?
Admin team.
Okay.
So district admin team first, and then we presented it to the principals.
Okay. The only last comment I'll have, I understand if we all have different opinions, I can respect that, but I actually attended an OSBA class, it wasn't this past year, it was the year before, and they talked about hope. And the whole entire class was about how hope is the biggest influence in success. And I know programs like LifeWise, I'm saying, not this, this policy is not just for LifeWise, it's for, you know, anybody that wants to take advantage of it, but programs like that have shown to be really successful in lowering bullying incidents and, you know, some of those mean behaviors that we have talked about before. And I also think that, as the OSBA class talked about, hoping something bigger than yourself is something that these kind of programs and folks who want to utilize this policy could take advantage of. We could see a positive outcome, so that's all. I understand we have different opinions, but.
Okay, so, we have a motion and a second on the table to, with the three edits that Mrs. Payne proposed. Can we vote on that, and then we could have further discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Ms. Payne.
Are you clear, is everyone clear about what we're voting to strike?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I did jump the gun, I apologize. Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. April?
Yes.
Ms. Jesslyn?
No.
Ms. Marchaza?
No.
Ms. Cook?
No.
Motion fails. Two, three.
I know that I had some questions. Possible edits, I'm not sure, I know that I asked Mr. Heath, and some of these questions, I heard some of our community members as well. When we're looking at, release time instruction shall be limited to lunch, recess, and/or study hall times. I'd like to hear a little bit about considerations for students that receive remediation, enrichment, especially required, like IEP minutes, therapy times, you know, the legally required special education times. If that is scheduled, especially at the middle school, high school level, if that is scheduled during their study hall times, how would we handle that? Would that, would that take precedence? Or are they allowed to be released? Are they just waiving their therapies or their special ed time? And if we had students that maybe were doing a, like, a lunch bunch with a social worker during lunch, or maybe they were being disciplined, like they had an in-school suspension, would they leave for religious release time on those days, or how would that be accommodated?
Yeah, we talked a little bit about that today as well. For the most part, we shouldn't have too many issues at the elementary level from a special education, remediation, intervention-type standpoint. From the opposite end, anything from an enrichment standpoint, it shouldn't be an issue there. At the middle school, high school level, there, because there are so many different periods built into the day, there is some flexibility there, so there wasn't a straightforward answer that, you know, we use study hall time for those remediations, it all depends on the student. So a lot of the conversation that we had today around these topics, really, it's going to come down to who the individual student is and how we might need to arrange schedules to make sure that, again, we're not limiting their participation, and we're also making sure that we're meeting our legal requirements from IEPs, 504s, whatever it may be. So again, hate to say the answer depends, but it depends on who the student is. Obviously, we want to make sure that we're following the law and following our policy, and if we're allowing that release time during a study hall, then that would still be granted. If we need to rearrange schedules to make sure we're meeting IEP minutes, that'll be something that we can look at on an individual basis. From a, the only issue that we haven't really resolved yet, and again, this may take place on an individual basis, you know, if we're dealing with a student discipline issue and they've received a lunch detention, we're not 100% certain how we would handle that if it was a religious release day for them. So, again, it will kind of depend on how we arrange that. We can start to play around with some of that in our administrative guidelines once we finalize what the policy language is going to be, just as we're working through logistics. But those are some things we can handle administratively on an individual basis.
Can I ask a follow-up? So you said at the elementary level, it won't be much of a problem, but I know we've got lunch bunch programs, I know we've got remediation taking place, so can you walk us through how that would be administratively resolved? If, for example, you had said, you know, just throughout the example of, you know, parents want to do this every single day, you know, have at it. So how would you resolve that?
We typically are not using a lot of lunch bunch type things at the elementary level for remediation.
Oh, my daughter's in one, that's why I asked, yeah.
So that's, it shouldn't be a huge issue. Again, it'll be handled on an individual basis. There are different times built into the days, especially when we're working through some of the minutes that we have for our math instruction program with Open Up, and also with the science of reading components now that are added in there. Obviously, we've got a lot of support and remediation within those blocks of times now that are very specific for individual students. Again, if there's something that they're involved with during a lunch period for whatever reason, then we'll work through those on an individual basis as well.
Is there any way we could build in something to say that will prioritize, you know, academic or behavioral progress for the student? I mean, can we do something along those lines?
I'm not sure I'd put it in policy, but maybe in administrative guideline language.
Yeah, okay.
I just have a couple more points. And Craig, I'm assuming the same, the same recommendation stands as last month, is less is more in policy?
Yeah, that's why we've eliminated quite a bit in here with all these options.
Well, I mean, I think that logistically, if you keep this language in here, it's not doable, especially if you're talking lunch, you're going to be eating up time just getting that child lunch, and then you have the issues if they have, if they're a hot lunch, and it's, it's, it's just, it might not work out. Maybe it will, maybe it won't, but to put this in there, I think I would rather see that we limit it to once a week than limit the time, because, you know, the whole purpose of the law is to, is to give families this opportunity, and if we make it so restrictive that it's impossible for churches to accommodate us, then our legislators are going to have to go back and restructure that, and we don't want them to have to do that. You know, you keep, you say, we want to maximize instructional time, and we will, and we can. That's, that's why we, you know, we have these specials, and we trust parents to say, you know what, art is wonderful, I would also rather my child, see my child benefit from being taken out, learning about God, or whatever, you know, whatever the religion is, and they always, I'm sure, will incorporate music, art, physical activity, these things are usually really, really exciting, especially for the littles. Making, keeping this language in here is infringement of rights, and then we're going to run into some liability issues, because you're making it impossible for families to take, take advantage of the law. And the, you know, the unintended consequences of having such a strict policy like this is going to be that we are going to lose more students to private schools, and we have to get on board and start competing with them. So, I mean, I just think, like, why, let's not treat this policy because it has to do with religion, any different than any policy. Less is more, and then we can figure out, you know, I trust our principals and I trust our parents to know what's best, and maybe we do end up saying, like, the best thing for this building and this schedule is lunch and recess, but why put that, restrict us and put that in our policy?
I would have to argue that putting, that offering less extracurriculars and putting less emphasis on extracurriculars doesn't make us more attractive as an option for a school. People, people often say to me, Mener is so lucky for all of the extracurricular opportunities that we have, and that's why they're choosing to go here over other schools that don't offer the same number of classes and the same opportunities. So I would argue against that. You know, we are following the law, we're offering up an opportunity, it's protecting our instructional time, and I had another thought that goes along with protecting instructional time. If release time is, you know, we're setting designated times, it's lunch, with this policy would be lunch and recess if we land on this. What happens when a provider doesn't bring a student back and it, and now it's into reading time or math time, because they're 20 minutes late or something like that? Is there, I see in this policy, we have, the district will not release students for religious instruction release time to any private provider that fails to adhere to the prohibition of the trinkets and bringing things back, but what if they just don't bring them back on time? Do we have any, are we able to cut ties with the group? Is there a warning? I mean, I'm not talking about, you know, there was an unforeseen accident on the road or there was road construction, but like a constant, regular, you know, they're missing time coming, is there a way to deal with that situation?
Obviously, there's no language in the policy right now that speaks to that, but, and I think for everything that we're talking about here, I know the nice part about the timing of all this is we're, yeah, this will be implemented on April 9th. It gives us a couple of months to kind of see how this works here at the end of this year, and we can make adjustments to any policy language or any guidelines as we're going through this. I think we need a starting point, you know, we don't have to have everything perfect from the get-go, but we need a starting point so that we can get this implemented in an efficient way that's, that's going to maximize the instructional time without limiting the amount of time that is available for the religious release time in the, in the student's day. So that's why we've got the proposed language there. So again, it's not in there right now, but obviously, if we're dealing with, you know, kids coming back 15, 20 minutes late every single day, we're going to have some issues, and we'll have conversations. But again, you know, much to all of the other scenarios that we've talked about, those need to be handled on an individual basis administratively.
Thank you.
Can I ask, oh, go ahead, Jenny. When I had a conversation with the LifeWise representative at Capitol Conference, I asked how it would be feasible to have all of the gathering, signing out, transportation, having the program event, gathering everybody back, transportation, and sign back in, to complete that in 45 minutes? I don't care if you took a music class, a phys ed class, a STEM class, whatever it might be, that's the extent of the time. That's why I said, why wouldn't you have your program at the end of the day, as many faith traditions have done for decades? My children went to their religion classes either in the evening or on Saturday mornings. Some faiths do Sunday morning, whatever it might be. And they said, no, that was perfectly fine, that 45 minutes, it worked. Okay, but if you're saying now, well, we don't really have to assign that grab, importance, not gravity, but importance to classes that are considered an elective and social education. not gravity, but importance to classes that are considered an elective, and social studies, history, and government are all social studies. I don't know. Would you make it an hour all morning, all day Tuesdays? I just think this is important to prioritize the learning program that has been carefully developed with subject specialists across the curriculum that benefit our students and prepare them for academic success. And if we have a policy which meets the requirements of the law, that every student whose parent wishes that child to be released for religious instruction, this is how it would happen. I think it confines the disruption in the school offices to at least a reasoned window because, for example, if you're taking all fourth graders out of one elementary school, they're not all going to be in electives at the same time. It doesn't usually work that way, and teachers have their PLCs and how that all works. There's just so many moving parts that I think it's an undue burden to try to intrude into curricular time, whatever that might be. And is that fair to the student who missed all of the music rehearsals for the program that they couldn't be a part of because they never learned the music? Or they can't be in the STEM exhibition because they never did the project because they didn't have that opportunity? So I think it's fair and reasonable for a public school district to focus on our primary responsibility, to make that the priority, and to make sure that we accommodate the law in a reasonable way. And I think this policy does that.
I just wanted a quick question. Mr. Heath, could you talk about how the lunch situation would work? If kids have to buy lunch or they get free and reduced, like, how, logistically, will that work?
That'll be part of our administrative guideline work. Some of that will be dependent on what day of the week and what time period during the day. There could be some grab and go options as well, depending on who we're dealing with. So that'll be something, once we figure out the individual students, the grade levels, the timing, we'll work with our nutrition services to figure out those details.
So grab and go would be something like they, you know, get a box lunch that's left at the office for them, and they take it with them? Got it. Thank you.
I just had a couple more comments. When, Mrs. Cook, I don't think that that was Rose's intention.
Yeah, yeah.
I think you kind of used a straw man fallacy by arguing against something that she wasn't arguing about. So when you said, you know, that she didn't want extracurriculars, that we offer so many different things, I think we would still do that, we would still offer all of that. And I don't think that course offering would change. I think we'd still have those electives, and, which is funny that we're calling them electives and extracurriculars when in the policy we're making them core curriculum. So it just shows that there is a difference between the two. So I do think that she wasn't trying to make that, Rose wasn't making that argument at all. She was making the argument for the policy and the intent of the policy to not restrict it. Will we then, once we, if this policy passes as is, I know tonight's just the first reading, Mr. Heath, because this is the first time that we're calling all of these things as core curriculum, won't we have to update our handbooks and everything else that states electives and call those core curriculum as well?
It's possible.
I thought it just said graded courses. Does it say course curriculum or core curriculum?
It defines core curriculum specifically.
Yeah, just to clarify, I was saying, yes, obviously, parents send their kids to Mentor because of all the amenities and electives that we have. But parents also make decisions on where to send their kids based on religion and faith. And so that was my point. If we offer this, then it's more attractive, and maybe some parents would consider staying here. You know, also, I don't know how many teachers you guys have talked to, but teachers won't mind having a few less students in their classroom for one period, especially because we get a lot of complaints about overcrowded classrooms. So, you know, I don't think you're going to find any teachers that are upset about that. And then just because, to all of your points, so many moving parts, it has to be figured out, all the more reason not to have such restrictive language. And, you know, again, we can work this out, but let's give it a chance. By making it so restrictive, you're basically, I mean, it's going to make it so we either are going to get sued or our legislators have to go back and make it more restrictive. And they're trying to rely, like, maybe it does end up being what you're all talking about in just lunch and recess, but why would we put that in there? I just think that's a liability.
And to your point, Rose, I do think that when you brought up the private education and how we're losing students there, I do think that's a valid point to make because in the last, from, you know, 2019, 2020, we have saw an increase in homeschooling by 62%, private schooling 26%. Our enrollment has gone down by 12%. With talks in the State House about how they're going to readjust, you know, funding for public schools, I just think it is a good point to make, and I think it's something that we have to be really cognizant of.
Is there any other discussion on this policy? Seeing none, let's move to our next item. So the next item on the agenda was the second reading, which we know passed unanimously last time. So we're going to go to our legislative report with Ms. Murchausen.
Thank you. Okay, so lots to report on. The State House is very busy lately. So just first, a couple of updates from the State Board. They have some draft rules open for teacher licensing and permitting. So today is actually the last day to comment on those. It may have already ended at 5:00, but you may have, you may actually have till midnight on those. The ODEW, both Director Steve Dakin and Jennifer Stumpf of the ODEW presented on department priorities and school transportation to the Senate Education Committee last week. The ODEW also has rules open for public comment. These are open until March 27th, and the draft rules are about the Ed Choice Scholarship Program. So if you're interested in having your say, go ahead to their website and do so. All right, State House update. So first and most importantly, the biennial budget, also known as House Bill 96. It's looking at its final push in the House right now. And in fact, March 11, 12, and 13 is, there are hearings, and I'll get to that in a second. But basically, the legislature is planning pretty much an accelerated budget timeline this year. It's pretty fast, with amendments due March 14th, and a substitute bill expected on April 1st, an omnibus bill on April 8th, and House passage on April 9th. So that's pretty aggressive, they're moving quickly. So like I said, right now, there are hearings in the House Finance Committee, so this is the last push in the House. You still have the opportunity to advocate to the House Education Committee, they're still hearing testimony right now. You can submit written testimony if you feel like advocating for your public school funding. You can do so until 10:30 tomorrow. You can submit written testimony, and if anyone's really interested in doing that, I did post the witness slip on my Facebook page for the school board, so you can go to my Facebook page, the slip is there, instructions are there. We would love for you to advocate for public school funding. So again, April 9th is, they're looking for passage in the House, and then it will move on to hear testimony from, let's see, April 28th until May 16th, they'll be hearing in the Senate Education Committee, hearings in the Senate Education Committee, and then moving on to the week of May 26, public testimony in the Senate Finance Committee. And then we are looking at a June 12 date for when the Senate passes their version of the budget, and it'll go into a conference committee from there. All right, so that's the biennial budget. Of course, it sounds like many of us are going to be going down to Columbus next week is when the legislative conference is, so we'll be interacting with our legislators there and also advocating for public school funding. Pending legislation, all right, so there are some bills moving that I'm going to highlight. There are a ton of them, I won't go over them all. But we'll start with the Senate Education Committee, they had their first hearing on Senate Bill 113. This bill would ban diversity, equity, and inclusion in all public schools. The Senate Education Committee also had the second hearing on Senate Bill 34. This would require public school boards to select at least one of the bill's listed historical education documents to display in every single classroom. The Senate Ways and Means Committee had a hearing on Senate Bill 66, which would change the 20 mil floor calculation by including income taxes, emergency levies, substitute levies, and all inside millage revenue sources that have historically been excluded from this calculation. And they heard opponent testimony on that bill, lots of different organizations, including OSBA testified against it. The House Judiciary Committee heard sponsor testimony on House Bill 79. This would increase the penalties for assault if the victim was acting as a sports official or if the assault were committed in retaliation for the victim's actions as a sports official, so think referees or coaches even. So that will bring the penalty for assaulting a sports official closer to the same protection afforded to, excuse me, bus drivers, teachers, and administrators, which was interesting. I didn't know that there would be a difference. It will also bring Ohio up to speed with 21 other states that already have this type of protection in place. They also heard sponsor testimony for House Bill 88. This would require public schools to incorporate instruction on fentanyl awareness and abuse prevention for grades K through 12. And it would also require school boards to designate one week of the school year as fentanyl poisoning awareness week. Just a few bills I'll highlight in new legislation that would be directly relevant to us. House Bill 153 is a companion bill to Senate Bill 107. This would require state and school district board members to be nominated by primary election and to appear on the ballot with a party designation. House Bill 154 would require a school district approval of residential community investment area property tax exemption, so not RIDS but CRAs. And House Bill 155, which is a companion bill to Senate Bill 113, this bill would also ban diversity, equity, and inclusion in all public schools. That's the end of my report.
So there's two DEI bills, is that right?
Yeah, there's a Senate, one in the Senate, one in the House. That's correct.
And then, that was interesting, the, you say for local school board races, they would put an R or D next to your name?
Yeah, that one is the House bill, but there's a, the Senate Bill 107, I think, might be a little bit different in the language. That one was introduced first, but yes, and I think that one, that one had said, I don't think there was anything mentioned about primaries in that one. I feel like that one was just the letter.
Because, okay.
And it wasn't required, it was like you could, you can put an R, D, or an I next to your name.
Okay.
But you weren't forced to, so.
This one's a little different, it makes it required then.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know that either of these will be in place in time for this election because they're, I think most of us know there's a school board election this year.
Yeah.
So I don't know if they're going to be in place for this fall, but we'll see.
Thanks.
Sure. I had a couple, just two updates I didn't know if you mentioned, but the House Bill 96, the budget includes no use of cell phone the whole day, not just bell to bell. I thought that was pretty interesting.
I did see that, yeah.
So beware, kids. And then the, they're supposed to be extending, proposing to extend the school year by 53 hours. Okay, I thought that was.
I wonder if we'll get more information about, because I know OSBA had come out with some stance about Governor Dewine's, what you just mentioned, him including no cell phones throughout the whole day, and OSBA took a stance against that. So I hope that next week, if we go, we can get more information probably from them on Governor Dewine.
Do you know if the cell phone was, like, they can't have them in the building or they just have them put away?
It just said during the school day, so I don't know.
Yeah, there are several mandates that were attached to House Bill 96, so it's yet to be seen whether they stay. And, you know, I plan on talking about funding while I'm there next week, but, you know, mandates might also come up.
Great, thank you so much. We now have our student achievement report. Mrs. Dusseling.
Thank you. Spring is nearly here, and Mentor students are closing in on the start of the fourth quarter. With their teachers' guidance and encouragement, they continue to be engaged learners. Here's a sampling of the opportunities and events from the past few weeks. Scheduling for next fall is nearly complete, and there are personalized pathways for every high school student. With this array of options, each can select the right one to meet their needs and interests. Some students have chosen advanced placement courses, and some are working toward earning an honors diploma. With an expanded selection of new and continuing courses in next year's career academies, we're making tremendous strides in meeting students' interests. In 2024, our first round of career and technical education program acceptances saw 64% of applicants accepted, with 57% securing a spot in their first choice program. However, this left 16% of our 10th grade class waitlisted. Now, with Mentor transitioning to a comprehensive CTE model next fall, the impact is remarkable. As of today, 95% of students who applied for a program have been offered a seat in that program, and an incredible 83% were offered placement in that first choice. The number of waitlisted students has dropped to less than 2% of the entire 10th grade class. These career initiatives, along with redesigned course offerings for middle school students, align seamlessly with the district's strategic plan. Our goal remains clear, to ensure every senior graduates with a personalized roadmap before investing time and money in post-secondary education. Science Olympia is the premier STEM competition in the nation. For 40 years, this rigorous extracurricular has trained secondary students to tackle standards-based challenges. For four decades, with the help of their dedicated coaches, Mentor has fielded its teams of competitive problem solvers. The Science Olympia 2025 Northeast and Northern Ohio Regional Tournament was held last week. Competing against schools that included Solon, Mayfield, Chardon, Beechwood, and Hawkins, the Cardinals impressed us all by scooping up medals in the scrambler, electric vehicle, and entomology categories. The Mentor High team placed fourth overall, Shore's team placed fifth overall, and Memorial placed third overall. All three teams qualified for the state competition next month. The Congressional App Challenge was instituted 12 years ago to encourage students to creatively build their coding skills. Mentor High junior Ayesha Faruki entered our District, US District 14th competition this year and last year. She took top honors both times. Her 2023 entry was called PUNET to predict likely blood types of offspring, and this year, she entered the Recycle Disciple to use a smartphone to scan the symbols on products, making it easy to identify which items can be successfully recycled. She credits Mr. Butterfield's AP Computer Science class as being a helpful springboard to her success. Engineering is, at its core, problem solving. For the Mentor High Annual Cardboard Canoe Challenge, project lead-the-way students were allowed two weeks, two rolls of duct tape, and all the recycled cardboard boxes they needed to design and build a boat capable of carrying at least one group member across the pool. On February 21st, the teams traveled to the Mentor Community Rec Center to race their boats, testing to see if their ideas worked. There were many successes and a few spectacular failures, but each student loved the fun and engaged hands-on learning mission to sail to victory. The popular Mad City Money Team Competition was back for 2025, thanks to the support of our generous community partner, Cardinal Credit Union. Mentor High students competed in a simulated game of life where they navigated a set of challenges to budget their way to success. Scholarship money was awarded to the top teams. First place won $2,250, second place won $1,500, and third place won $1,200. Congratulations are in order for our Allied Health students and their instructor, Mrs. Ingram. For the first time, all 19 seniors passed the rigorous Certified Nursing Assistant exam. This licensure is a high bar, and their 100% success exceeded expectations. In addition, our Allied Health students went to the HOSA Regional Competition recently, and 15 of them qualified for the state HOSA competition in Toledo in April. Speaking of state qualifiers, there was excitement in the air as academic and athletic honors were noted for an array of students from Mentor High. In addition to HOSA, there will be CTE students representing Mentor for DECA and Skills USA contests at the state level. Among our honored winter sports athletes are the varsity hockey team, who qualified for the state. for the state tournament for the first time in school history. They defeated University School in the regional championship 4 to 0. The Cards had a strong start in the state semifinal, but ultimately lost to Upper Arlington, who went on to win the state title. Our Cardinal team was the Greater Cleveland High School Hockey League Red Division Champion, the 2025 Baron Cup One Champion, and the regional champions. The boys wrestling team had three wrestlers qualified from the district-level tournament to the state tournament this past weekend. Liam Lloyd finished fourth overall in his weight class, and Jack DeBois was fifth overall in his. Our third wrestler, Ben McWilliams, did not place. The team won the Greater Cleveland Conference Team Title for the regular season. In girls wrestling, Delora Harold qualified for the state tournament after finishing second at the district level. Unfortunately, she did not place at the state meet. In gymnastics, Coral Bush qualified as an individual on the balance beam event. At the state meet, she scored a 9.125 on the beam and was 13th overall in the event. In boys and girls indoor track, the boys team finished 10th as a team overall. Billy Dennison was fourth in the 3,200-meter run. Matt Pankowski was fourth in the 1,600-meter, and the 4x800 relay team was runner-up and had the eighth fastest time in the nation. Kylie Coleman was 10th in the 60-meter dash and 15th in the long jump. Finally, the Mentor Swim Teams Dylan Tackett competed in the 50-meter freestyle, and Marion Collins competed in the 100-meter breaststroke. To send these academic and athletic competitors off with the best wishes from their classmates and teachers, there was a rousing Cardinal pride clapout through the halls of Mentor High last Friday. As a community, we're proud to have so many students represent us through their hard work, discipline, and good sportsmanship. 18 students from Mentor Shore and Memorial Middle Schools participated in the Ohio Music Educators Association District 7 Honors Choir. Students representing 16 different schools worked with Dr. Christopher Clark from the Case Western Reserve University Music Department. They performed a combined concert at Shaker Heights Middle School. On February 26th, the district hosted a showcase in honor of Black History Month. The event featured art, writing, and other work by Mentor students, highlighting an important tradition of historically black colleges. Attendees were treated to a pep band performance from Euclid and Shaw High Schools, as well as our own Fighting Cardinal Marching Band drum line. Also on February 26th, the Ridge Elementary 3rd graders held their annual folk dance night under the direction of Mrs. Amy Houston. The students performed traditional dances from around the world, even inviting their parents down to join them for the Cupid Shuffle. Kindergarten registration for the 2025-26 school year is underway for children who will be five years old on or before September 30th of this year. Students who are registered by May 1st will be able to participate in the May Kindergarten Day Meet and Greet at each elementary school. They'll also receive a free Class of 2038 t-shirt once they're signed up. February and March have offered many chances to celebrate music here at the Fine Arts Center. A concert by the Mentor High orchestras treated the audience to Mozart and more. In preparation for their large group adjudicated event last weekend, the choirs from the middle schools and high school presented a beautiful festival program. The impressive program of challenging music delighted the audience. A February concert featured music from the Shore Middle School bands, and in honor of March 4th, the Mentor High bands entertained the audience with an array of musical marches. There was a Sousa selection, of course, and 11 other special pieces, including The Foundry and La Terre Saudée. It's spelling bee season, as we heard. Congratulations to Mentor's own Sebastian Gill. The Memorial 7th grader won the Tri-County Showdown on February 28th, and will be re-representing our district at the Scripps National Spelling Bee in Washington, D.C. at the end of May. The 20th Annual Talking Art Museum was held at Sterling Morton on February 26th. The 4th graders, under the guidance of art teacher Jackie Spatino and their 4th grade teachers, presented a walk-through opportunity for families. Students created a unique collection of paintings, and attendees watched as the artwork came to life, with students sharing background information on their artists. This is a wonderful annual event that requires research, teamwork, art production, and public presentation skills. Selected work by the secondary fine art students is beginning to appear around the district as the competition and exhibition season gets underway. This is just a preview of the bounty of work we can expect to see in the weeks ahead. Last month, the Memorial Middle School Drama Students presented an adaptation of the beloved French fairy tale Beauty and the Beast. This coming weekend, Shore Middle School will present their spring musical Into the Woods here at the high school. Mentor Theater is thrilled to present its latest production, Nine to Five, the Musical, set to captivate audiences from April 18th to 21st here at the Fine Arts Center. Tickets are available online through Lutus, and it will be the fun finale to their 101st season. We look forward to an additional law enforcement presence on our campuses as security officers join, resource Officer Jack Skelly in protecting our students and staff. We were thrilled to host the Mentor Schools Food Market again on February 27th in collaboration with the Greater Cleveland Food Bank, United Way of Lake County, the City of Mentor, and Heinens. Together with the help of community volunteers and students, we successfully distributed over 12,000 pounds of fresh produce to community members in need. This marked our 21st food market, bringing our total impact to over 229,000 pounds of fresh produce distributed. Last month, Mentor City Manager Ken Filippiak presented the State of the City address reaffirming the value of our city-school partnership in lending reciprocal value to our community. On February 21st, the Mentor High Concert Mix Choir traveled to the College of Worcester for an exchange with the Worcester Chorus. This afternoon, workshop on the concert repertoire, a campus tour, and in culminating collaboration with the Worcester Chorus, they presented a combined rehearsal and joint evening performance. The director of the Worcester Chorus, Dr. Lisa Wong, shared, "We would be thrilled to host Mentor again in the future, and we deeply value the district-wide support that fosters your outstanding music program. In my experience working with high school choral programs across the state of Ohio, I can confidently say that you possess a true gem."
At this time, we have the Chief Financial Officer's report and recommendations.
Madam President, Members of the Board, Mr. Heath. Our monthly report on our district finances against our five-year forecast based on our projections kind of moving forward. Year-to-date, our current revenue collection is indicating we're about $634,000 to the good, beyond what we expected, and expenditures are showing that we're about $731,000 below, giving us a net positive impact to our ending cash balance of about $1.4 million, reducing our deficit to about 1.6. Our actual revenue for the month was up this year in comparison to last year by $6.4 million. That's because our advance from the county was back to what it had been historically, and up about $6 million from the prior years. Compared to the last year at the same time, again, obviously, the big difference there is the fact that our advance was much higher than it was last year. Again, current revenue is collecting about $634,000 more than projected, and the most of that is coming in the form of our investment earnings being up, still receiving better-than-projected returns on our investments. When we look at our expenditures, our expenditures were up slightly this month in comparison to last year at the same month by about $300,000. But overall, for the same time period through February, we're down about $464,000. Again, coming in about $731,000 lower than expected, and the majority of that coming in the form of general supplies and all their expenses coming in much lower than we were predicting at that time. Happy to answer any questions on the current financials through the month of February.
I'm sorry, can you repeat? I missed the $6 million difference. Just go over that for me one more time.
The auditor gave us a larger advance this year than they did prior year.
But when we get that $6 million, it all washes out. It's not extra.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's a timing issue, really. It's just that the advance was larger than it was last year. So it doesn't mean we're going to get $6 million more from the county when everything's...
So it's not a windfall, for example?
No, no windfalls.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify.
Zero windfalls. I think this would be the appropriate time for me to see if I can get religious release time during board meetings, though. Not worth the effort.
You did try to get out of that conference, though, and we...
I did try to get out of the conference, yes.
No such luck.
I figured you guys are good on your own without me. I'm going to ask the Board to approve items B through F. I'm actually going to pull G off and do it separate, just because it's not a regular item that would fall under consent agenda, so we don't have any issues. So again, if the Board would approve items B through F at this time.
So moved. Second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Those motions carry 5-0. The resolution accepting the Fairfax Elementary School and Mentor High School Roofing Project bids.
So moved. Second. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to note out that the bids that we are hopefully approving here shortly were $480,000 below budget.
That's good. Combined?
Yes.
Okay.
Combined, correct.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. Resolution to certify the tax rates from the county auditor in the Budget Commission.
So moved. Second.
I'll give it to Ginny, then I'll give Ms. Payne a second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. The next 11 resolutions are acted on separately to comply with the revised code. Again, this is a result of some changes that were made a few years ago with regards to tax complaints. And again, for the Board and the community, we only appeal tax complaints when they've been lowered and they're more than $50,000 on commercial properties. We do not have anything to do with residential. Just to be clear, these are all commercial properties. We've done the proper notifications of notifying anybody that these would be on tonight's agenda, so I'll just do them one at a time. Our first tax complaint, can I get a motion to... Move, please.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. Item J for our second tax complaint.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item K for tax complaint.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item N, tax complaint.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item M, tax complaint.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item N, tax complaint.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item Zer-, or, oh, excuse me, tax complaint.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. Item P, tax complaint.
So moved. Second. Is there any discussion?
Ms. Marchaza.
Me.
No, this is Payne.
Oh, my gosh. Sorry, Ms. Iapolo. Ms. Payne, okay. Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. Item Q, tax complaint.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. Item R, tax complaint.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. And our last tax complaint, item S.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. That concludes my section of the agenda.
Mr. Wade, could I ask about how long is this going to take for them to assess for us? When will we know?
It depends. Sometimes it takes a couple months, sometimes it, you know, takes years.
Oh, okay.
Because there's a variety of processes depending on how far it gets appealed.
I see. Thank you.
I would like to just request a short break. Could we?
That would be great.
Take a break from a couple minutes?
Thank you.
Thank you.
To five minutes? Yeah.
Five minutes.
Okay.
Also pointed out to me when we spoke over the phone, that also was a year for union negotiations. So there was a big increase there. Nevertheless, we still see a big increase overall. The number of board meetings, not as big of an increase here, but we did see, again, when we have turnover in leadership, that's going to cost us money, that's going to cost us number of meetings. And of course, when we're meeting more frequently, you all are paying us to meet more frequently, right? We don't, obviously, we don't get paid go-gobs of money, but we certainly do get paid to be here. So the costs of paying board members to be here went up 50% during the superintendent search year. Again, that was also a year of union negotiations, so account for that as well. But overall, we've seen an increase of 13% since 2019. So what can we do? How can we decrease conflict? So I do want to add just one other thing, too, that I thought of after I put the presentation together. The community survey that we did in 2024, I believe, the overall performance rating for the board was somewhere between 40 and 45% approval rating. That's not good.
Do you know how many people were included in that survey?
The community survey?
Yeah.
I think it was only like 2,000.
Mr. Heath, do you remember?
Because we have about 50,000 in Mennor, so it wasn't really a good...
I don't remember the number.
Nevertheless, if 2,000 people think we're doing, only 40% of them think we're doing a great job, that's not good enough for me. I would really like to see that improve. So what can we do? The study's authors recommend that educational leaders and the broader public work to diminish the opportunities for conflict. We should uphold norms of respect, evidence-based reasoning, and civil deliberation that embraces the well-being and dignity of all. Normally, I don't read from the PowerPoint, but I think these are really important. And that we model the behavior and also provide students with a powerful lesson about who, how those who think differently than one another can still work together on one of society's most important endeavors, that is educating the next generation. Yeah. For me, this has always been really important. I know I have floated this out there many times. I think dialogue is something I promised to the folks who voted for me, so I'm delivering on that promise now. We've been experiencing high levels of conflict for years now, even before I was on the board. And so I do believe something has to change. And I think that the community has told us in multiple ways, they're pretty tired of it, too, and they want it to change. So I think as leaders in this community, that it's incumbent upon us to set that example for civil discourse that will allow us to move forward in more productive and constructive ways. And I do think we owe that to not just our voters, but to the community at large, and most importantly, to the people we serve, our students. So that being said, here is what I'm proposing. Can I go to the next presentation? Thank you. Okay. So I've talked about Braver Angels in the past. They are a nonprofit, and they are all over the U.S. They have a Northeast Ohio chapter here. We can, oh, I have the slide thing, so I can move forward. I actually think the individual who, oh, there she is. Nancy Miranda is here. She works with Braver Angels. And if she, if any of you would like to talk to her about the organization before she scoots out for the night, I'm sure she'd be happy to do so. But they are a nonprofit, and they offer free services to the community, including the school districts. And they do really amazing work. They really put a lot of folks in a room, and they help conversations happen. Not only do they help conversations happen, but they really teach people how to talk to one another in healthier ways, right? So their mission really is to depolarize the U.S., as they say. They try to get folks to help one another understand each other's points of view and engage each other, even though they might disagree, to look for common ground and find ways to work together. They support principles that bring people together rather than divide us. They have almost 15,000 members across the U.S., 113 local alliances, and 380 Braver Network partners. And I'm not going to go too much into their partners, but what I really want to focus on is this. I think this is so very special. Their partners are folks from all over the spectrum, right? They actually vet their partners, especially their funding partners, and they find, you know, they find folks that are not partisan, right? They actually make sure to have balance. So if they're going to have one foundation that is maybe left-leaning, they make sure to have another foundation that is maybe right-leaning. So they really work hard to find that balance so that all sides are represented. And when they do have these events and these community discussions, they have both sides of the political spectrum represented as well. And I think that is so very important in communities like ours. So what Ms. Miranda and I had talked about, we've been talking for a long time, actually, since July, and she has walked me through a lot of their different workshops that they offer. They offer workshops on all sorts of different topics in all sorts of different ways, even to high school students. So if this is something that our high school would be interested in taking on for our students who are, you know, interested in discourse skills, that would be really amazing as well. But I was thinking more along the lines of either a presentation for the board or a community workshop, perhaps in a setting like a Cardinal Cafe. This workshop, Nancy and I agree, are probably the best fit for us. So Skills for Disagreeing Better brings folks together, and again, teaches them how to talk to one another in less polarizing ways, teaches you how to listen to understand, teaches you how to kind of understand where your, you know, your partner is kind of coming from. There's a lot of interactive work that is done in this setting. And they lead the workshop. And again, it can be more of a presentation for the board, but I do think a community workshop would actually be most effective with us. So today, what I am, oh, I'm actually finished. There's some really good information here, too. They have surveyed their participants in the past, and these majorities are really important. So the majority of participants feel they better understand the other side. They feel they themselves are better understood by the other side, and they feel better prepared to apply the skills to another conversation in the future. So those are directly from participants. So they don't, it's not only, you know, that they work with school districts, because they do that in Ohio, but they also in all over the country. They have worked in other areas of the country with school boards as well. But we would be the first board, school board in Northeast Ohio that they would work with. But they also work with universities, the Cleveland Catholic Diocese with senior centers, libraries, Leadership Medina. So they're kind of all over the map, because truly, these are skills that are applicable to people everywhere. And I think that we would benefit quite a bit from them. So their goal, once again, not to change people's views, rather to just change views of one another. And again, to teach folks how to disagree better. So I'm going to back up to this slide here, because this is the one I want to suggest for us. And I want to hear, I guess, up for discussion, how the board feels about this. I'd love to make a motion to move forward with planning something, but I want everyone to share their thoughts and what they think and how we could maybe move forward with this. Or, of course, any questions?
I love the idea of us finding a way to do better. We've made some attempts, and it hasn't gone terribly well, but I'm always open to trying again. I think, you know, your reference to the community survey, that's the most response we've ever had for any survey the district's ever done, is my understanding, with those 2,000 roughly respondents. And the length of our meetings and the clashes that we've endured and the social media ugliness, it just, I find it sad and embarrassing for us as a community, and I would like us to do better. And so I would be very much in favor of maybe using one of our Cardinal Cafe frameworks, if that would be something that would kind of make sense, that we could see how we might make some positive progress.
Great. I had a question. With the Cardinal Cafe format, so would that be open to anyone in the community that wanted to participate?
Yeah.
There would be no cost? It would just, anyone would come in?
This is all free, yes. I don't know if I mentioned that, but Braver Angels is a nonprofit, and they offer these workshops for free. But I also thought, you know, that guiding coalition in our committees with the strategic plan, I know they were really enthusiastic about the work they were doing. We could invite them as well. That was a great, you know, representative group of our population that we, you know, we all had input on, too. So, I mean, I'm open to whatever. I just want to try it.
So is your motion to do a community group?
I think so. I mean, to me, that's what would be most effective, but I don't feel like, I mean, I don't, I don't want to make that decision unilaterally, obviously.
Can we ask? I mean, we've got some people here. Obviously, we've got this side, we've got that side, we've got some people in the middle. Can we ask to just see, you know, raise your hand if this is something that you'd be interested in for the community?
We have a couple. Oh, yeah, cool. Well, I mean, again, like, we hosted, and the folks who really want to move ahead together, those are the ones who will move forward together and make this community better.
I would be interested in learning how to listen better. I really would. So I think that, you know, to your, to your point, and we know that, you know, the study is valid, there is a cost to conflict. I don't know exactly what our number is, but I know that there's a cost to conflict. And sometimes that's just public opinion cost, too. And I think that our school deserves to, you know, understand both sides, to hear both sides, and to make decisions based on that. If that helps us get there, definitely willing to give this a try.
Great.
I'll just add a couple comments. One of the comments learned that you had made is, if we're busy talking about culture wars, we're not focusing on academics. And I don't think that is true, because so much of what's going on in the culture on both sides is woven into what we're seeing that we have to then vote on at the table. So, and I think that's probably why, you know, in my past four years, I've had OSBA definitely weaponized against me for those classes that were called, you know, board retreats, because the message there was just agree with the majority, you know, they don't want you to have a dissenting vote. In fact, my very first board meeting, when I voted against something, the next day, I got a call from the president, not Maggie, previous board president from our, she's no longer on the board, and she basically yelled at me for voting no. And then shortly after that, we had a board retreat where the main message of the retreat was, you know, agree with the majority, and once there's a decision, let it go. The problem is that there's so many decisions that are made that are morally and ethically very strong on both sides. So I think that's where we struggle, and that's why these decisions have, the board decisions where there's three-two splits, have caused, you know, division in our community. Because we're both kind of, I understand your perspective, I think you understand mine, we're just at, you know, diabolically different ends on some of those things. So I don't know that it would help us as a board if there's community interest. I'm not against, you know, against offering that to the community, especially since it is free. But those are just kind of things off the top of my head that I was just thinking about.
Well, I guess to follow procedure, I'm going to second your motion, and then we'll just continue with discussion. So is...
What is the motion?
Yeah, what is the motion?
The motion was to...
To move forward with scheduling.
We have to motion to schedule something, or?
Well, I don't want to do it on my own. If we want to move forward with it, we can vote on it.
To organize a Braver Angels community.
Yeah. And, you know, I think Cardinal Cafe is a great setting, but if there's another idea about where to have that take place, I'm all ears.
I don't know that we really even need a motion. We never had motions for Cardinal Cafe, so...
No, no, it's really just to move forward with scheduling with Braver Angels. I don't want to, I don't want to schedule on behalf of the board without the board's permission.
I think there's at least consensus among, I mean, you seconded it, so makes sense.
So your motion, Mr. Wade, is to, my motion is to move forward with scheduling a workshop with Braver Angels.
Okay.
That includes the board.
And I will second, so...
Wait, so now it's including the board? I thought it was community.
Oh, no, this is, the whole point is that the board is engaged in this, that we are the, we are the folks here at the meetings who are experiencing the conflict.
But to be clear, it's not a board meeting, right?
That's right.
I should have asked that.
That's right.
It's not a board meeting, so the board doesn't have to attend.
I guess not. I mean, I would be really disappointed if they didn't.
But then it would be a meeting if we had the whole board there.
Yes.
Yeah, we'd have to notice.
You have more than two people at this. I would highly suggest that we...
But wait, hold on, let me ask a question, though, because we all show up at events all the time. Like, we all go to, you know...
But we're talking about board business, so then it would be an open event.
No, no, no. No, the workshop isn't about board business. The workshop is, you sit down, Nancy leads a workshop, and you talk about a conflict that has absolutely nothing to do with school board business, absolutely nothing. So it's a skills-building workshop, right? You're working on, you know, I pick red and you pick blue. I'm going to tell you why red is important to me, and you're going to tell me why blue is important to you. And we're going to work through that conflict together using literal skills that they will provide you with.
But we can't do that without talking about what our conflicts are.
No, no, we're not supposed, no, you're not supposed to talk about anything to do with school board business. That's the idea. Because otherwise, you can't learn the skills, right? You can't learn the skills to disagree better if you're in heated conflict and passionate about the topic, right? So you remove, you remove the passion, and you talk strictly about an unrelated topic. That's where you sort of, that's your interactive kind of play area, to learn the skills to disagree better.
Madam President, I guess from the person who's responsible for the policy and kind of governance of the board, it would behoove, what I still hear, though, is a work session-type topic that would be similar to what we did with OSBA, just now doing with Braver Angels. Inviting community in is fine regardless. I would still highly recommend...
Sunshining?
That we sunshine it to be safe.
Okay.
Not to state that we're not talking about board business, but you're doing professional development. In the past, we have followed that. I mean, we could get a legal opinion, but...
No, I respect that. So...
Can I weigh in real quick?
Absolutely.
Before, I still don't know, I don't know what the motion is. Because I have, to move forward, the motion to schedule Bravers Angels workshop. And then I think we threw the board in that as well, correct?
Yes, I want the board involved as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Wouldn't it primarily be for us to work through this exercise? We could, you know, sunshine notices, because we'll all be together. But the intent is not to discuss board business...
That's right.
Or revisit things that have caused conflict in the past.
Exactly.
But to learn a better strategy for speaking thoughtfully and more collaborative with each other to de-escalate some of the tension.
Exactly.
I think, I'm struggling with this, because the, if we're talking about blue versus green or topics that don't even relate, I think we can all get along with each other just fine, when we're not talking about things that are very, very near and dear to our heart. I mean, if we're talking about boys and girls bathrooms and locker rooms, I'm going to be at a 10 out of 10, you're going to be at a 10 out of 10 to defend the other side, whatever. That, this is so different, I don't really see the value. I think our problem isn't dialogue. I think our problem is decisions that don't align with our community. And I just don't know that this is going to fix our problem. I think we're going to still have conflict, because we're just on opposite ends. We can be more respectful of one another, I think, when we speak. I think, you know, that's been an issue, not just up here, but out there. There's things like that that we could work on, but I don't think that this is going to solve the divide in the community, or up here. Sorry, Rose, I think you were next.
That's okay. That's fine. I like hearing. So I appreciate the sentiment. I think you're trying to, you want to, I think you're a doer and you want to problem solver, Ms. Marchesa, and you want, you want to fix what's up here, but you lost me at violent rhetoric and threats, because that's not what I'm seeing up here, you know. First of all, I don't think we have a high turnover. I think our faculty, especially our administrators, I mean, they've been here for a very long time. I don't think that's a problem in our district. I think our problem is an inability to read the room, and we are not a divided community. And like Ms. Payne just said, we don't, we are, we have problems up here, because we can't make decisions that reflect out there. So, you know, I'm, I think if it's free, and anybody that wants to join in is fine, but as a board member, I'm not, I don't see the value in sitting there and spending time to, in a way, be lectured that I'm not falling in line, because I, these are major, we're not arguing over, you know, little things, and we're not micromanaging. We're arguing about these big things that, you know, no amount of, of, I don't know, counseling or, is going to, is going to change that for me. So I think it's nice to offer it. We have the beautiful paradigm. It's nice to offer it to anybody that wants it, and it's free, and it's valuable, but I don't see the value in it doing as a board.
That's unfortunate to hear, that you don't see value in working on skills, on how to work together. I mean, that's disappointing. What I will say is, for one, I didn't, I wasn't talking about turnover for the entire district. I was talking about leadership turnover. And, you know, luckily, we have a superintendent here. I'm so glad that we have the five-year contract under our belts. But we did have a superintendent who left. So, and our assistant superintendent is also leaving. So, you know, when leadership turns over, my point is, it costs dollars, right? And as far as violent rhetoric, I have to share just a few things that have been said about me. One, parents need to start talking to school board members in the parking lot. I'm thinking it might be the only way. It is the only way. These are things said about me. There's more. The people that think that pornography should be in schools should absolutely be in prison or in a wood chipper. I agree. I vote for the wood chipper. Make the wood chipper great again. This is also about me. There's more. All we have to do, Gunther Eagleman says, is set one example under a picture of me, harsh and swift. Yes, said libs of TikTok. Period, said a community member. So if you want to tell me that there's no violent rhetoric, I'm here to tell you you're wrong.
That's not board violent, that's not up here.
This is the community, and this is a result of our meetings.
We can't control what they're, we can't control what they say.
And if you don't want to participate in making things better, that's disappointing to me.
That's not what she's saying. I think that's a very...
That's not what I'm saying, not at all.
That dialogue right there, you guys, like, you just said if you don't want to participate in things, making things better, that's not the correct dialogue to use with somebody who has a simple disagreement.
I'm applying this to all of us, Annie, all of us. I'm saying this is a group project, and we need to work on it. This community deserves better. They put me here to ask for better, and that's what I'm doing. I know we've never tried anything like this. I get that, and that's hard. But we can't keep doing this. This can't go on. This community can't take it. Our students watch this, all right? They see us doing this. This is a disappointment to them. And those are my kids out there, too. I want to do better for them, and I want to do better for these people.
So, I hear what you're saying, but I think, like, those comments, what were those, from the libs of TikTok things?
It's from multiple sources.
Okay. So we all get that. I mean, I had a sexually explicit...
Oh, sorry, she said she didn't, so...
No, I mean...
I said one who didn't.
You said you...
Okay, one at a time, please, one at a time.
You said you didn't know about any violent rhetoric, sorry.
Ms. Payne? Louise, oh, gosh. So, you know, I think that it's, it's more difficult than, than this, this training, this session. I think that it is, like Rose said, it's, our decisions are not in alignment with the community, and so we're hearing those. And you do have those outliers. I don't think everybody talks like that. I mean, I've seen sexually explicit things said about me and Rose on one of Maggie's posts, and then people wonder why we don't allow comments. Well, I don't want that bullying behavior going back and forth on anybody. I don't think it's productive. I think, you know, that's not productive. This class could be...
Just to clarify, I didn't say anything out of a book.
No, 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 sorry, not, not from, like, somebody else who...
On your post, yeah.
And I know this person has actually had to have police reports against him because of his violent, disgusting rhetoric. I just, I'm apprehensive, because I think our decisions are the problem. I don't think it's our dialogue. Could we do better? Yes, but we've had three trainings, three board retreats where we've talked about these things. So I don't, I don't know that this would fix anything. I think it's good to offer. It's free for the community. I also don't know that people who are saying those things about you, those things about me, are the people who are going to show up. They're not. They're going to continue, because they're just, you know, it's unfortunate, it's vile. It's, you know, attacking people's kids is vile as well. Like, you can't, you can't reason with people like that, because they're not going to be the people who are going to show up. They don't even, you know, say anything at the board meetings. Most of them are people who are keyboard warriors. So while I appreciate, you know, the sentiment of this, and I could see it as, like, just Cardinal Cafe, let people come and, you know, see. If they want to take advantage of it, great, it's free. But I don't know that us as board members have to be tied down to it, because I don't know that I see the value yet. I'd like to research it further.
Well, I, I think we've, we have fair points on both sides, and I'm not sure we're going to have resolution. So there is a motion and a second on the table. Can we, can we vote if we want to move forward on this now? And, all right, please call the roll.
Ms. Marchesa?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
I have a quick question, sorry. Are we voting? Just clarification, point of clarification. Are we voting for board and community?
Yes.
Okay.
No.
Ms. Jessling?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
No, only because I don't think the board should have to go to it. But I agree with it for the community, just noted in minutes.
Yes, I agree, same. Thank you. Next, we have new business. And the first item under new business is a discussion on policy 5722. Policy 5722 is school-sponsored publications and productions. And Mrs. Marchesa has some discussion on this as well.
Yes, thank you for adding it to the agenda, Madam President. Oh, okay. So we have heard from a couple of speakers this evening already about the student newspaper. And I, too, as Ms. Freeman indicated, have spoken with the young journalists, the student journalists who work on that paper. So listening to them really made me think quite a bit about not only the paper and the class, because these, these two agenda items, our next one is going to be about the journalism class, are kind of tied up together. So I think we might do some drifting back and forth, since they're so interrelated. But if we could just focus on the policy first. Our policy, 5722, was introduced in 2021. I think it was with our last revamp before I joined the board of all of that policy. So it kind of came in with that sweeping, big change of all of the different policies. So, but after speaking with the students who take, who are in Cardinal Nation in that extracurricular, and, and hearing their concerns, basically what I heard from them is that they feel restricted and unable to publish freely. And, and they really point to policy 5722 as the reason for doing so. I do think they have a good point. I think, you know, what they told me, they put together a wonderful presentation. Many students stood up and shared slides and instances, and I have read their articles. I think there's some very talented kids in that group. But, but basically, what they shared with me is that they, they feel that their student expression is being restricted. And I think that it is important to afford our student journalists with more freedom of expression, and of course, not without oversight. But here's why. Our current policy on student journalism is what's known as a Hazelwood policy, which was founded on the 1988 Hazelwood case, in which the Supreme Court of the United States gave school districts broad, sweeping authority to censor student journalism. A policy like this is, it specifically allows schools to prohibit student speech in, in school-sponsored student media that is, quote, "anything other than neutral on a matter of political controversy." And from our, directly from our policy, it, it's, it calls student media "non-public fora." So basically, while students, it says, "While students may address matters of interest or concern to their readers and viewers, as non-public forums, the style and content of the publication can be regulated for legitimate pedagogical, school-related reasons." Basically, school officials have the ability to restrict anything they see in there for any pedagogical reason. And, and another thing that's happening, according to what they told me, is there's basically one person who reviews all content, and that does tend to bottleneck as well. And I do think that the class, you know, moving over to a journalism course is going to help alleviate a lot of that, of course. So I do think that's moving in a positive direction. Nevertheless, I do think with, you know, changing to a journalism course, we are going to need to adapt this policy to fit that course. And the policy we have right now is not going to work for that course. So right now, we're censoring student speech as long as we can claim it's, quote, "reasonably related to legitimate pedagogical concern." That's led to a number of articles either being delayed or completely eliminated. So I do, I do find that troubling. Students who are interested in pursuing careers in writing and journalism should have the ability to explore and exercise their rights in this space, so they get a sense of what it's like to truly write, to inform or persuade through writing. They are already demonstrating an interest to engage in civil discourse with their peers. They're showing an interest in engaging in topical conversations happening right in their own communities and buildings. And my question is, why aren't we letting them? Their ability to do so now, under our current policy, is pretty limited. Freedom of expression through school-sponsored media is a fundamental principle in our democratic society granted by the First Amendment. A robust and free student press is critical to the development of informed and civic-minded adults. What are we teaching students by restricting their speech? That they're not entitled... That they're not entitled to the same rights as everyone else until they turn 18? We are essentially priming them to disengage from public discourse, sending them the message that they aren't allowed to express their own opinions in their own newspaper unless their principal tells them they can. For a board that frequently touts its own First Amendment rights, it seems hypocritical that we deny these same rights to students we purport to serve. If we don't allow them to learn how to engage in civic discourse now, they'll be no better off than we adults are today. I think we'd benefit from more clarity and flexibility in our policy, which is why I'd recommend changing policy 5722 to adopt the 1969 Tinker standard. That is based on a case in which the Supreme Court ruled that student speech is protected in schools unless it would substantially interfere with the operation of the school or invade the rights of others. This would mean that our student papers are designated as a forum for public expression. To be clear, what I'm envisioning will still be, enable us to include oversight and regulation that prohibits content that is not protected. That is to say, content that is obscene, libelous, slanderous, or likely to incite others to commit illegal or disruptive acts. Other districts such as Mayfield managed to do this with their own student newspaper with a much more flexible policy and administrative guidelines. Willoughby Eastlake uses an older Neola policy that establishes the student newspaper as a limited public forum, which gives students control over the paper but still restricts content for its, restricts content, excuse me, that is unprotected. So the instructor or the advisor can also create their own requirements for editorials and opinion pieces, making it clear that their editorials are opinions. And you can also build in restrictions along the lines of, you know, editorial guidelines basically give guardrails for the writers. And I imagine this will happen in the journalism course as well, but you know, it reinforces that, hey, this is a student paper, we are not taking a position on these issues facing the community or these political candidates. There are definitely things you can do to build in those guardrails. So, but the overall ask is, I'm asking the board to see if there's interest to revisit this policy in an upcoming meeting. I'm not suggesting we change it right now, but if we could discuss it in a future meeting, especially in the context of this new journalism course. That's it.
I guess I have some comments on that. I do think that, so the policy that we currently have, we're actually currently violating it. So we do have to do something because right now, which I think is why the journalism class was being recommended, because we are currently violating our current policy. Because in our current policy, it says, "The board expressively prohibits the use of social media related to student publications." And we know that the advisor of the group does place these all over Facebook and Twitter or X or whatever you want to call it now. So that would be a violation of this policy. I do think that, well, I know that it does place students at risk by putting them on social media. So a few years back, there was a student who spoke at Mike and she talked about, you know, her side of things and then she was quoted in this student-led, you know, newspaper article and she was pitted against the pride group from Mentor High and the Lake County Allies group. And because of that, then being shared online on social media, she received hateful harassing messages to, you know, through social media from grown adults. And they, I mean, they were really, really terrible. So I think that that's a risk that we're, and maybe that's why the policy says that. I would assume that some of this is, you know, backed by legal language as to why it's in that policy in the first place. Then I do think we're, it says, "Only district-approved social media, as defined by bylaw 0100, may be used to host school-sponsored student media in accordance with policy 7544." There, it's not like on our official Mentor Schools page that it's being posted. It's being posted by the advisor on different areas of social media. So we're in, we're in direct violation of that as well. So the board authorizes the administration to engage in prior review. I think we do have that now. I don't believe we did previous to, I think this last year, was it? Correct? Since you've been on as superintendent, you've made sure we were applying that.
Yeah, because one of the things when we made the transition in Neola, when we had our extensive meetings going through policy language, that was one of the things that came out of the board discussion as well.
Okay. Yeah. I think, you know, in my tenure here, I have had several complaints about, not necessarily the students writing it, it's more, you know, apprehensions that are had because of the topics. We heard a speaker tonight bring it up, being linked to, you know, somebody who does have a leaning one way. So I don't, you know, I, I understand why we're trying to move over to the journalism class. Maybe if we do decide as a board, because it's going to be, you know, probably voted on eventually, if the board decides to keep the student-led articles, I think that having like a co-advisor, just to kind of even the field out and make sure it's not just under one person, maybe having two people with two different perspectives politically would be really helpful. And maybe then we wouldn't need the administrator review after that. So just a thought.
Any more discussion?
I just want to make sure that students have an opportunity to participate that doesn't require being enrolled in a class.
Yeah, that's the next agenda item.
So that's, that's, when, as we're looking at this policy, it sounds like, Ms. Payne, you are also in agreement that relooking at this policy would be a good idea? That we should look at some options and maybe it's a, I don't know if it's administrative guidelines or if it's policy, but we should be revisiting this?
Well, I, I agree with the language that's in there right now. I don't think we should use social media, but I'm open to, like the student that spoke tonight, I understand her perspective. I, you know, I don't want people, if she said, "No one from Cardinal Nation can use the journalism class," that's concerning. You know, we have to, I feel like we have to do something to...
So I think the journalism class will be our next discussion.
But if we, what I'm saying is if we move the Cardinal Nation to the journalism class, like we're intending to do, that's, I think, where they're having an issue because then they can't even partake in it, if I'm understanding that correctly.
Yeah, right now, I'm just asking to revisit, like, look at the policy and make some changes to it. That's all we're talking about right now.
Well, I would say we're in violation of the policy, so something has to, something has to change. While I may agree with some of this verbiage that I mentioned, not saying the whole policy, I think if we are going to change the language because it's a Neola policy and Neola does back their policies that are given to us like this, if we make additional changes, we will have to consult with our other legal.
So I know that I was on, it was Ms. Jesslyn and I that looked at this policy as the first review and then, you know, went to the full board. And I remember this discussion because we wanted protections in place. We wanted there to be limits. Quite honestly, we wanted to have an administrator looking over things to make, to really to protect children was what our idea was. We didn't want them writing something that would be libelous, that would get, you know, get them into trouble for some reason, that would jeopardize a future job or a scholarship or, you know, some, something like that without input of someone else. So that was our thinking behind it. Realizing now that it could be limiting free speech, they could have a case on that. I'm, I'm open to looking at options. I, I think that this is still legal. You know, I, I'm fine with looking at options, especially as it fits into a new course now. When we were looking at this, we were thinking of it as the Cardinal Nation newspaper, not just limited to that, but that was kind of our primary focus. And we thought it needed someone kind of checks and balances. But now that we have a journalism class, I think it's interesting to look at it from a different lens and maybe just see different options.
So you, I don't want to put words in your mouth, so Corinne, just, are you thinking of still moving Cardinal Nation over to the journalism class, but then having something else where students can write like editorials or whatnot? Is that what, I'm just trying to grasp...
Well, right now, I'm just talking about policy. I'm just talking about like a review of policy for the journalism class. We know we're having a journalism class. That's already on our, just a review of policy of how it would fit for the journalism class, but I do have thoughts about that when we get to that next topic.
I do want to point out, it's not just, I think this also is relevant to like productions as well.
It is.
So yeah, it's actually a bigger umbrella. So we should be clear that we're, we're talking not just about Cardinal Nation here. It is, it is truly a policy discussion that I'm asking us to take up at the next meeting.
Yes. Is the proposal that students would produce a newspaper that's in print rather than electronic?
That, no, I'm, no, that's not...
No, I'm asking Ms. Payne...
Oh, sorry, I thought you were looking at me.
Oh, me? Am I proposing that it would be in?
Because that's not cost effective.
Oh, no.
That's not going to happen.
I just, I think it's not wise to have like the actual advisor posting these things instead of like a designated page as well. Like I just don't know, and I also don't know that, like that one student that I'm talking about who was harassed then because it went all over. I think that's why we have to make sure that it's, that there's, you know, maybe a co, like two people looking over it. I just think that we have to make sure they're balanced so that the community one doesn't perceive it as we're pushing one side of the politics, you know? We've had that, we've gotten emails about it, whether it's this side or that side. So I think just having like a more neutral approach and making sure it's balanced is what I'm, I guess, saying.
So you're open to looking at new policy with, I mean, we may, we may say this is the best.
Yeah, we can, I'm open to talking about it because right now, we're violating the policy. So we can't continue to violate the policy now that we know that we're violating it. We have to do something. I don't know what that something is though.
Okay. So if you could give us some options with maybe either different Neola policies or administrative guideline policies that might better align with the journalism class?
So let me just kind of summarize a couple of things for us here. First of all, you know, we do have the policy in place, again, kind of aligned with the Hazelwood case as opposed to the Tinker case. The proposal for the journalism course is something that I had brought up a couple years ago with our administrative team because, quite honestly, this is the first district that I've worked in where the student publication, whether it was a newspaper, a magazine, an online publication of whatever sort, was not tied to a class. That's how a lot of things were done in central Ohio, was tied to a curricular course. So that's why I had presented that as an option for us. Number one, I think it, it provides the instruction on basic journalism principles and ethics that maybe is not currently part of this extracurricular activity that we currently have. I want something that's going to be aligned with some standards that allows our, our students to learn. The, the other part to this, because if, I know I shared all the policy language with you, probably when that was first brought up, maybe in January, so it's been a few weeks now, but I think there are 13 pages to that, that policy language option that Neola provides us. So as we start digging into this, I, it makes sense to review the, the policy while we're creating the course. I think we need to work closely with the, with the administrative team at the high school. I think we need to work closely with the teacher that's going to be teaching this new journalism course because, again, journalism standards are housed under the English department. So we've identified an English teacher that has volunteered to teach the course as well, which I think will be a good thing for us. And they're working through that framework now. I know we had a couple of conversations here or a couple of public participants earlier that were discussing the course itself and kind of the limitations with not being able to fit into a schedule. And obviously, you know, as we're making this transition into a course, we'd have to work through some things with our students that are already currently writing for Cardinal Nation. But the, the idea as we make this transition is that they would start in that journalism one course that would be more of something that ties into their, their class schedule on a daily basis. And then if they wanted to continue writing, then with a journalism two, three, and four course, that would be more of an independent study that didn't have to be tied into a specific period of the day for them, that would still allow them to, to write articles and submit articles for Cardinal Nation that would run through that teacher at that level. And then, you know, whatever other administrative guideline safeguards, guardrails that we want to put in place, you know, how that looks to, to make those final decisions on publishing the articles would then be part of what we would have to decide from a policy discussion standpoint. But again, I think both of those things working together as we're going through this process, I think will be an important thing for us. I'll again, try and link that into the board update this week so everybody has all of the, that optional language again. And I guess I would encourage us to, to take a close look at those different options that are there. Think of it in the context of this being run through a curricular class that we, that we would be offering at the high school level. And then we can start having some conversations about what options and what, what direction we want that entire policy to take. We will work administratively here between now and, in our April meeting to figure out exactly what our recommendations might be based on the practices that we would put in place. The one thing I will share with the group is that we do not currently have any administrative guidelines for policy 5722 and Neola does not have any template guidelines for us to follow either. So if we were to create something, we'd be creating something on our own. The other, the other part to all of this, obviously, you've got the optional language that is listed in Neola and if we're able to piece those things together, from a legal standpoint, we would be fine with Neola. If there is any deviation from that, then we'd have to consult legal counsel on, on what it is that we might try and put together from a, from an overall policy language discussion then.
Can I ask a follow-up question? When do you think the, I think it's a really good point to kind of take a look at the course plan before we make policy. So when do you think that would be ready?
We're still thinking April right now is going to be our timeframe. They've been working on it now for probably two and a half months, our curriculum department in collaboration with Mr. Crowe. And then, like I said, they've had conversations with the English department. They've identified a teacher who's willing to teach the course. So we're fairly far along at this point. It's just putting that final framework together. Once we get the framework in place, they'll spend some time over the summer getting like the, the daily lessons figured out from there. Really, the framework's the big part right now. And that should be ready by April.
I guess it would be maybe important to work with that teacher too on creating the policy, because I want it to make sense for the, for the course as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is there any more discussion with that? I'll just, to weigh in, I'll just defer to legal because I think that's, this policy is, what's in there now protects us. You know, we have to have some kind of, we need our administrators to be in charge, but well, I'll, that's, I'll leave it at that. Okay, great. The next discussion is journalism class discussion. Mrs. Marchaza also brought this up.
Yeah, now we can dig into that, yes.
We've spoken about it a lot.
We have. Yeah, so I really want to thank once again, Ms. Freeman, who I think is still here, yes, for speaking and again, for putting together such a great presentation for me. And I know they delivered that to Mr. Heath as well. So I share the same concerns, of course. When this shifts over to a class, I do think it's going to limit, I mean, it will, there's no doubt that it will limit the number of students who can participate in writing for the paper. I think offering the supplemental alongside the course makes sense. I think that would allow lots of different students, whether they're AP or whether they're just sort of taking it up as a hobby or trying it out to see if they like writing. I, I think that we have to keep that open for students to engage with. It's a, you know, I think a lot of, a lot of them take it very seriously, but none of them, what they told me, none of them would be able to take this course because of their packed schedules. So, and again, she mentioned, it's great that they would be grandfathered in, but what does that mean for future students? So I want to make sure this opportunity is available to future students, but of course also to them as well. So I'm hoping that we can consider maintaining the supplemental alongside the class. We would then have those two people that Mrs. Payne mentioned kind of overseeing We would then have those two people that Mrs. Payne mentioned kind of overseeing the paper in tandem. Really, it would come down to, you know, the students are writing the paper, but they would have those two folks oversighting, and two heads are better than one, as I heard somebody say already. So that, those are my feelings about it. I'm, you know, curious to hear what other people think, too.
I've also had a couple of students, most recently at State of the City stopped me. And they were from Cardinal Nation and said, hey, you know, I have a concern about this. It's moving to a class. And their concerns, there were many. First, they told me, you know, how, and I think this is very interesting, that none of the students who are, you know, really passionate about the newspaper and enjoy it very much have time for it in their schedule. So that, that is just telling to me. And I cannot anticipate that that would necessarily change in the future for future students to suddenly have room in their schedule. We have a lot of classes that are offered. A lot of our students have very mapped out paths from the very beginning of their freshman year. They know what they're taking each year. And to your point, I, and I think it's a, it's a good point that you might be able to take classes as more of an independent study. However, there's a big difference between the amount of work that you're taking as a class versus a club. And when you're writing for a club, you could, hey, I'm really busy. I'm not going to make this meeting. I'm not going to take on an article this month. But when you're in a class, you have workload to do, and you're already taking on a workload. I had another point that students made to me was some of the students are very concerned about their GPA. They want to, they're worried about class rank. And, and for us, that means honors classes, AP classes, CCP classes are weighted, which changes your GPA. So if this class doesn't have a weighted option, then it would actually hurt them to take a class that's not weighted. So, you know, considering that as an option. I do not, I, I love that we're going to a journalism class for, you know, the, the side of it of a career. Because we will have students, I would hope, that want journalism as a career. And I think that that's excellent for them and even just anyone that just wants to write. But to not have it as an extracurricular, that is, that is troublesome to me. I, I think that everyone should be able to write and pop in and out without needing to have that requirement of the class. It, it's, as far as having an advisor, I like the model with, you know, like marching band has. When, you might have the same advisor as you have the class teacher. I think that it's important to have more than one person reviewing, but I don't necessarily think it needs to be two different teachers. It could be an administrator. I'm, I'm okay with that. I just, I think that we need to have an opportunity somehow for an extracurricular to be in place. And if that's, the same teacher is also the supplemental, I mean, we couldn't force someone to do that. Or it's a second person, I, I'm fine with that. And it's really not about a per, a specific person. It, it's really just about having the opportunity for the student one way or the other.
I think I'd feel more comfortable with, like, whoever's, whoever would, we had in mind for the journalism, journalism class. I'm assuming they probably have certain credentials, right, for that class. It would be more of like a language arts or something like that. I would feel more comfortable offering both things if there was somebody who's, you know, got experience in the field doing both. I think that would be really important. I could, I could, I could be interested in that if that were the case.
Yeah, that's smart. We want someone that has-
Yeah.
That, you know, that schooling.
Yeah, the professional side of it.
Absolutely.
So I know we can't really vote on anything, right? I mean, this is just us offering our thoughts.
Just a discussion.
Yeah, and so I know, Mr. Heath, this is ultimately your decision. What are, what are your, can we hear your feedback?
I'll take all of this and have that conversation with our curriculum group that's working on it right now.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you hearing us out.
All right, next on our agenda, we have executive orders. And Mrs. Payne and Mrs. Iapolo requested that we put these on. So I'm going to open it up to whoever wants to speak first.
I'll go first. Okay, so just to recap, for anybody watching, or that's, I'm sure most people know, but last week Senator Bernie Moreno concerned about our district's handling of the executive orders reached out to the board for clarification. With $5 million in federal funding at stake, he recognizes the Trump administration's commitment to enforcement. I'm glad to see that Mennor isn't just a blip on the radar, that he truly cares about us. He truly cares about Ohio education and wants to protect our district from losing critical funding due to just a few board members, you know, acting against the community's interests. His question to Ms. Cook was valid and one I was eager to have answered. Until recently, the board was told we planned to comply with all executive orders, but I was surprised to learn that that had changed. Once again, politics are in play, and we won't comply with any executive orders under court challenge. Something that the, we know that the Democratic Party has actively pursued against Trump's order. So they're just filing court challenges left and right. We're not attorneys, so it's not our place to delve into the legalities of the executive orders here at the table. I think when Ms. Marchesa, you went beyond your role as legislative liaison with your comments last, last meeting. And given that the remarks were seen by over half a million people, as you mentioned with the libs of TikTok, it's no surprise that our district caught the attention of a US, or a US senator. You know, for me, I, I, what I'm gathering is that we are not planning on complying to any executive orders that are being challenged. You know, we know that based on our discussions and guidance that we've received, it's generally advised that districts do follow executive orders unless an injunction is in place. So, you know, I think that even, like I mentioned earlier tonight, even regardless of executive orders, we, we, there's enough evidence to support that our community does approve of the tenets of Trump's, President Trump's executive orders, and that there's no risk to the district legally to follow them. So, you know, and with all the state laws that we have, the risks that come from ignoring executive orders and our current financial status, I don't think we can afford to play this game. I think it's wise for us to say we will comply unless there's an injunction and give the community, give our taxpayers the, you know, just, just the knowledge that we are not putting our district at risk and that we are adhering them. And again, it, these things, you know, we talk about the, that, you know, some of those brain pops, some of these things that we're renewing, that you, they do have some of this stuff that's going to interfere with House Bill 8, with parental rights, with some of these executive orders and some other laws. So, you know, we already, we, you've already said, we've got a rubric lined up so that we can make sure that we're protected and that teachers don't, don't use any of these things. Why go through all of that when we already know it's not something that the community wants? And just, you know, say to the community, rest assured, unless there's an injunction, we will plan on following all of our executive orders. So, you know, well, and, and I know, I know Jenny, you don't like my Facebook posts, my, our press releases, but it's important. Like, I had some people say, you know, act like this was, this was causing, you know, a divide and this was just, you know, this was just rhetoric. But to me, it's, it's, it's a campaign promise that we said we are going to make sure that we are fiscally responsible, that we are doing what we can to fund the, this district. And so, so when I hear, oh, gosh, we are out there and now a, an US senator, and I, I, I wish I had and my dad had the pull that some of these people think that we have, that we got Bernie Moreno's phone number, but that's concerning. I would be concerned as a constituent if my board members didn't reach out and make sure that, hey, is, what are we doing? Are we, are we complying? So just, just to clarify that, I think, you know, when we sit at this table, we're not lawyers. When we sit at this table and we make statements that could potentially put our funding at risk, that's irresponsible. And so I think to defend our statement was to say, we're not, we don't, I'm not, I don't, I'm not, we haven't even had consensus up here about executive orders. This is, that's why we wanted it on the agenda, and that was, that was our plan all along. So, you know, I, obviously, I know we're a 3-2, and obviously, I, I know how this story ends, but how does it really end when it comes to a future levy? How does it really end, you know, come November when there's elections? We need to do things now, and, you know, I understand, I know what everybody feels like who are not happy with some of these executive orders. We had four years the other way, and we, we warned that that pendulum was swinging. So we have to do the responsible thing and follow what is going to fund our schools so that our students and staff can have all these wonderful things. We're arguing about journalism class is not going to be here if we can't pass a levy. So that's my piece.
So I guess I'll, I'll go next since it was put on there by Rose and I. I echo everything that Rose said. I think that it's, if, you know, it's, we have to be transparent. And while I appreciate the letter, Mrs. Cook, that you had, you know, with some help writing that and sending it out, I appreciate that. But I think it wasn't, you know, if we're truly not going to follow executive orders, any of them that are challenged, we need to communicate that to the public because they deserve to know the truth. I was also surprised when, I don't even know when it was, last week or whatnot, that I found out that we weren't going to follow any of them that were challenged. So, I mean, I would like us to issue, you know, some kind of board statement even just tonight saying, if that's what we're going to do, the public deserves to know that. Or if we are just going to follow executive orders but not ones that have injunctions, which, that makes sense, right? I mean, I understand that. And that's a temporary thing, likely. You know, I think we need to make that statement. I think the public just deserves to know what our stance is on it. And as Rose had mentioned, I think we see the pendulum swinging back. We see the two DEI bills, anti-DEI bills moving through the, the State House. We have the executive orders. We have the parental rights, parental bill of rights bill that already passed. So I think we, you know, in conjunction with the votes from November and how that turned out for our particular community, I think it would be wise to, to become in more alignment with the community and get rid of some of this stuff regardless of the executive orders. I also had a question for Mr. Heath. I know we were talking previously about, you know, some of the books that have been previously challenged and, like, the transphobia, deal with it and become a gender transcender that said, you know, you are transphobic if you only believe, if you believe there's only two genders. The Colin Kaepernick one that calls Trump supporters primarily racist and white supremacists. Books like that that are, you know, placed in front of K through 6th grade or whatnot, those have been challenged. They've been retained with a board majority. I voted against them just for transparency. Are those books that you believe with the parental bill of rights or these executive orders that should be then removed?
So a couple of things, because, again, we've got one executive order that we're, we're waiting on the recommendations from the Department of Education, the Department of Defense, the Department of Health and Human Services, and the Attorney General. And that's what that executive order stated, and that was that one, ending radical indoctrination in K-12 schools. That one does not have an injunction levied against it at this point. So right now, we're just waiting for those recommendations, and we'll follow what those recommendations are. What we're currently doing right now is we're going through all of our materials, all of anything in curriculum, books, whatever it may be, that may be aligned to some of the pieces that are included in that executive order, just to have our ducks in a row, ready to go when those recommendations come out. Those are supposed to come out by April 29th. It was 90 days after the, after the executive order, and that was done on January 29th. So April 29th is the date that we're waiting on for those. So we're, we're doing our due diligence right now just to get prepared for that. The ones that are currently under injunction are the, the ones ending radical DEI programs and then that Dear Colleague letter that came from the Department of Education. Both of those have injunctions right now. So, again, we can do our preparation work in the background with what potentially might be coming out of that, but that one is currently on hold. So I want to make sure we're very clear with, with the executive order piece that we're talking through right now. Again, currently, we're, we're working in the background, making sure that we get all of our, all of our, all of our, our materials in place so that if there is something that needs to change quickly, we can do that. Now, with that being said, also, we've got all of the House Bill 8 initiatives that are going to be taking place beginning April 9th. So those are the things we're working through, different recommendations right now. And that'll be part of the conversations that we have with our teaching staff. We had that conversation with our administrators here today. So there, there are several things that we're, we're already working through right now to make sure that we're going to be in compliance there. Some of them are related to materials. Some of them are related to notification systems. Really, overall, I think we're in really good shape. There, there are just some things that we'll be taking a close look at from our material standpoint.
I found it interesting, when I was preparing for the Brain Pop discussion, I had an old email from Mr. Porter, and we were going back and forth about, you know, what's accessible and what's not accessible. And at that point, that was like three years ago, they had blocked, actually blocked, there was, you were able to block it, the Pride videos, Pride 2020, Pride 2021, and then a few of the other things. So it, it's, I feel like we're not being consistent because if we're putting books that reference, you know, some of the concepts in the Pride with LGBTQ and with, you know, gender ideology and sexuality in, in K through 5th grade classrooms, and then, but yet we're blocking them from Brain Pop. I just want to make sure that whatever we decide to do, that we're consistent and also transparent.
Yep, and, and again, we, we're looking through all of our different programs, materials, whether it's digital or hard copy, to make sure that we've got everything that we need to have identified to, to move done at that point in time.
Is it your recommendation that we then follow all executive orders unless they have an injunction?
Yeah, that's, that's accurate.
So even if they're challenged, we should be following them, right? It's just injunctions specifically?
Right, so right now, the, the ones that are falling under that injunction are the ending radical DEI programs. So that's the stuff that's on hold right now. And that's, again, what, what we've kind of said about those executive orders here over the last month as things legally have been challenged and, and it changes fairly, fairly quickly. So, so, yeah, if there's something that's, that's falling under an injunction, you know, it's on hold. If it's something that is not under an injunction, then we're following. Yeah, we will always be following the federal and state laws.
Just for clarity, I have a question because you mentioned House Bill 8 a couple of times tonight, and you mentioned being in compliance on April 9th, but that's the effective date. The compliance, the plan we have to have is July.
That's when the policy has to be passed.
Has to be ready.
By July.
Right.
The implementation takes place April 9th.
So what's the difference? If the policy has to be ready, April 9th, you're saying we're implementing it April 9th as well? What's the July date then?
Yeah, the July date is just the, the timeframe that the state law indicates that boards of education have to adopt a policy for. The actual implementation of the law takes place April 9th.
That's the effective date, though.
That's, right.
So in other words, we have to be creating a policy.
We have to be in compliance by April 9th.
I'm sorry?
We have to be in compliance by April 9th.
But it says not later than the first day of July, following the effective date of this section, the board should have the policy. So, but how do we, how do we do the, how do we do the work without a policy?
Just like you were going to do for the bathroom, right? You wanted to comply without a policy.
Right.
Here, we're complying by the April 9th, but then we have till July to have a policy.
And everything's outlined in the, in the law, so, and, and again, I'll include- And everything's outlined in the, in the law, so, and, and again, I'll include this.
So, you're just going to follow exactly what this says.
Yeah, we follow what's in the law, yes.
And then we create a policy based on what you did? That's, I don't know, it just seems silly. But, I mean, if that's what we're doing, that's what we're doing, but...
But it's just requiring the Board of Education to have a policy.
Okay. It just seems backwards.
Mr. Heath, do we, do we need to have a work session before that?
I think that might be a good idea.
Actually, no.
No?
No.
Okay. Can you report out to us?
We'll have a board policy in place for, and we'll have a first reading in April, we'll have our second reading in May. But based on the state law, the requirement is that districts are in compliance by April 9th.
So, can you share the plan with us this Friday?
And that will be in the board update here this week with all of the, because literally, I took the, the law, and I wrote everything down. But I tried to clean up the language a little bit, because there's a lot of legalese in there, but, you know, what is it that districts are required to do? It's this, 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 and this. And again, a lot of those things, we've already got in place, because it's a lot of things with parent notification, and, and opt-out clauses, and those sorts of things, which we already do. And there are a couple of things that we'll need to, to clean up, but those are things that we're already working through right now, and on April 9th, we'll be ready to roll.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. So, what I'm hearing is, we are following laws, we plan to follow laws, we will follow laws, we're, we're in line to follow the new laws that are coming down. I, I guess I just don't understand the rhetoric around why, that we're not following laws, and that we're jeopardizing federal funding, because no one has ever said that. We've consistently said, we're following the laws, and we are not putting our federal funding at risk. I, I personally would never put the federal funding at risk. If it is something that I agree with or I don't agree with, I would never put the federal funding at risk.
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that, because it was unclear. It was, it was, I just, that's what I don't understand. We had a conversation, well, because we were told one thing, and then at our last executive session, you had mentioned something that, if it's challenged, we're not following it. So, that was where it was like, whoa, wait a minute, when, you know, when did that happen? So, I'm glad to know that, for the record, we plan on following all executive orders, unless there's an injunction.
Yeah. I think that's good.
And we are. Okay, good. I, that, that was unclear.
But do you feel that we're not?
I feel like we were, I was told before that we weren't, if there was a challenge...
You were told that by me.
In that executive session, that's what we talked about.
You said, I said that, I, no, absolutely not.
I, I was there as well, and I do, I do remember that. It was in a discussion about the executive orders, and then you just made us, just like a quick comment, well, you know, there are some challenged ones that we shouldn't be following, something like that. It was very quick, it wasn't like we had a big discussion.
So, glad to hear it. All right. So, can we put that to rest? We are following laws, we're not jeopardizing federal funds? Is there other things that we need to talk about with executive orders tonight? Well, that kind of segues into the next. Okay, right. So, our next discussion is Policy 1230, which is responsibilities of the superintendent.
I think I, I requested that to be on the agenda with Rose, so if I could have the floor.
1230.
Thank you.
Yes. So, Mrs. Payne and Mrs. Iapola would like to discuss this policy, and who would like to start?
I'll start. So, this is really going to be easy, after the discussion we just had. So, under B, it says, provide that all aspects of district operations comply with state and federal laws and regulations, as well as board contracts and policies. I would like to motion to amend that, to say, state and federal laws, including executive orders, that do not have an injunction, and regulations, as well as board contracts and policies. Just out of transparency, you know, for the community, I would like to motion that change.
I'll second that.
Stay, okay, you got to read.
You want me to go slower? I'll go slower. Okay. Are you ready? Are you sending it? Oh, he needs the policy.
I'll send the, the policy language.
But you said state and federal laws, including...
So, under B, with state, so, state and federal laws, and then changing it to, in like parentheses, including executive orders that do not have an injunction, and, and then the rest of it, and regulations, as well as board contracts and policies. So, I'm just inserting...
So, yeah, so what I'll do is, I'll say, you know, state and federal laws, comma, including executive orders that do not have an injunction, comma, and then the rest is...
Yeah, that's just the, that's just the motion that I want, is to amend it to include that language.
You're adding, you're basically adding the comma, including executive orders that do not have an injunction, comma.
You got it, yes. Which should be pretty easy, because we all just discussed it, so, this might not be a, as big of a battle as I thought it might be.
Mrs. Payne, have you spoke with our legal?
I did speak with Legal, in reference to, yeah, a couple of different things, but, yes, I did talk to him about executive orders, and those which...
Did you talk specifically about that change in the language?
I didn't state exactly how I was going to say it, but it was, I think we all got the update from Legal as well, and I think this verbiage would be in alignment with what, what he sent us, so.
Okay. I would appreciate just him looking at that before we made a change on the floor, but...
So, we could do a, I mean, we could, the amendment's on the floor.
Yes.
We could vote on it, and then, you know, this, this isn't the first read, this, the next one would be the first reading, so he could talk to, yeah, if you could, and, just at like your weekly one, no need for like a separate.
So, so at the next meeting, we could have this on for a vote, for, for the amendment, for a first reading?
Yeah, that's right.
Are you okay with that? Thank you.
I got it. I actually do, I swear to God.
Could you, can you update it in that document?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay.
Do you email that document to me?
Yeah.
Got it. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Do we need any more discussion on that?
No, but Maggie, I have new business that didn't make it to the agenda, unfortunately, but...
Oh.
That's okay. No, that's, that's okay.
Did you send that to me, and I missed that, or?
I went, I sent it to Mr. Heath, but it's, it's, in regards to the Refuge Club, so, let me just give a little backstory. The Refuge Club is a student-led Christian club at the high school, and it's open to everybody of all backgrounds and faiths. There's two amazing teachers who have been advising this club for quite some time, and each meeting is, it's student-led, is led by the student leaders. This year, there are three student leaders, and it's my understanding that this club is the only club that does not pay their advisors a stipend. So, it, I don't know why that is. I, I did do a little bit of digging, I did ask Mr. Heath a little bit about it. It should be noted that the, so, I was told that it was because they, there was no request made for it. So, I did a little bit of digging and found that they, they're, in the, in the past, and it was before you were a superintendent, and I do believe it was before even Mr. Crowe was, was principal, two to three requests were made, and they were denied on the basis that it's a religious group, and that they couldn't be paid, which is not true. So, technically, if stipends are given equally to all club advisors, which is what I saw, and the Christian club remains student-led, that it can, it does qualify. So, and actually, denying the, the Refuge Club advisors a stipend solely because it's a religious club is actually, could potentially constitute viewpoint discrimination under the Equal Access Act. So, I want to remedy that, and I, I know there was talk about that MTA has to figure out if it goes on there, but I know, I don't, I don't think it has to be part of the MTA negotiations as supplemental to actually give them a stipend, correct?
Couple, couple thoughts. There are other clubs in this district that don't have stipends, one. Two, all of our stipends are negotiated.
Okay. Well, how many, can you name a couple that are, that are not paid, that aren't given a stipend?
Off the top of my head, I can't. And I could, as a former high school principal, I mean, we had, I had clubs started all the time, that the kids would start, and then they'd go and find an advisor.
Yeah.
And as long as they found an advisor, they could then be an official club. I mean, Mentor High School's got hundreds of clubs. So, there are some that do not. I mean, just to be clear, so, and then, all other stipends, though, are negotiated. There are certain stipends at each level, then, that are determined through faculty council. Each building has, or each level has a certain number.
Right.
So, some of those are paid through that, and they stay the same, or they rotate from year to year, depending upon the faculty council that makes the determination. But even those stipends are determined by amount and how many in the contract.
Okay, because, so, that, that, I think it was the teacher committee or whatever, that, I think the principal has five in the contract, that he can...
It's not the principal, it's the faculty council, though, is the whole...
Okay, so the faculty council, but there's five in there.
Correct. The principal sits on that, but they're, he or she is not alone in that decision.
I mean, it's, it's a little concerning that that's never been included as one of them, but we've got, I mean, we've got Anime Club getting paid, we've got, we've got a whole slew of, I just feel like, and, and these advisors, for the record, did not complain and did not mention this to me, my daughter's in the club, and I, I just assumed they got paid, and when we were looking through the, the MTA contract, I noticed, I was like, oh, it's missing, and then I, one thing led to another, but...
And I would suggest that we maybe, you know, I did, and I'm going to withdraw my request for executive session to talk about contract negotiations, I would say that this would be something that we would want to talk about in executive session regarding contract negotiations, so that we're not violating collective bargaining and having discussions about what we would be negotiating in an open session.
But it has to be part of that to, for any stipend? Doesn't fall under anything else?
We don't have anything else that we have paid that's not considered a stipend, correct?
So, like, being on, like, the reading committee or anything like that, when you have teachers doing committees, they get paid a stipend?
But the board then has to then approve, they approve the rate, but it all determines back to the contract, but those are things that we're requiring teachers to do, and there's a rate for that.
Okay. Well, I'm just concerned, because that's, that's not good. That we've, you know, that's very, it seems very...
I can appreciate your concern, but I would just say this, have the discussion in the bigger realms of...
Okay, we'll do it in executive session.
Executive session and having negotiations.
Yep. Okay. And then my other, my other thing was the, that didn't make it on, the bylaw amendment. You know, with the whole Bernie Moreno letter, I found out that he sent you a letter, Mrs. Cook, and that your response went out without the board, without our knowledge. I found out there's people seeing it on social media. So, I just think that it would be, and I have a couple bylaws here that we can maybe look over, and, and just, I know it's late, so, if you guys want to write these down, or I can email to everybody to just look, I don't know where it needs to live, but I think we need clear language about how the board president communicates with the rest of the board when it comes to receiving or responding to any business of, you know, of the board president or the board as a whole, just in a timely manner, so we're all on the same page.
A couple of thoughts on that. I received the letter from Senator Moreno, and I immediately contacted our superintendent and requested to speak with our legal counsel, because, you know, that's a serious thing. I wanted to make sure that we were drafting things carefully, and that we were, you know, truthful and, and following everything that we needed to follow, and, and I would expect that any one of us would, would have done the same. They, I did draft the letter with legal counsel, and sent the draft, well, actually, our lawyer sent the draft to every member on the board. And at that time, the board was asked if they had any concerns, to let Mr. Heath know, and then I had another meeting with, with our lawyer to say, you know, okay, based on the draft that he and I first made, how do we want to proceed with it? And at that time, we changed some of the wording, and I sent it out, and out of an abundance of caution to not have any appearance of an Open Meetings Act violation, I did not send the letter to everyone else, but asked that it was sent to you. There was a time gap. That wasn't out of disrespect for anyone, everyone had seen the letter with only minor edits, and knew of the letter, and even had an opportunity to speak with our legal team on the letter. So, I think that the contention that you are somehow victims in this is false.
I don't know, that's unfounded.
Well, excuse me, I'm, I'm still talking, because, you know, I, I saw the, I saw the rhetoric out there, that, that I was somehow hiding things, or it's an open meetings violation, or, and, and quite honestly, I was responding, initially, when the letter came to me, it said, what is your response on behalf of the board? That was the question that was posed. And per our bylaws, as the president of the board, I can speak on behalf of the board.
Not without our permission, not without our consensus.
No, that, the bylaw doesn't say that. It says I can speak on behalf of the board. And, and the, what my response was, that per our policy, we follow all of the laws of the state of Ohio, and of the federal government, and of the Constitution. So, I don't need to gather everyone to say, are we following the laws? Because we took an oath that said, we're going to do this. We all took that oath. And it's one of our bylaws. So, it's our, it's our board ethics, it's our policy, it is our oath. That isn't, that shouldn't be a reach to say, we're going to follow the law. I understand that you took issue with it, and so, my words were very clear to make it, that it came from me, and it was my letter. And you did receive a copy of the letter. Yes, there was a time gap of a couple hours in between. That doesn't mean that you didn't receive it, and you did see the first draft, and even had legal counsel on it.
Okay. I'm not hashing this whole thing out, but we do, you do not speak on behalf of the board. You speak for us when we all come as a, as a consensus, to, you're the, you're the, the face of the board, in essence. Two, you were calling law, you, you weren't calling executive orders laws, there was a lot of, and a lot of people misunderstand that, so, it wasn't, it wasn't super clear. And, you know, there's no Open Meetings Act for you to send us an email. Mr. Heath sends us emails that go out to the public, to the school in advance, all the time. So, all I'm asking is that, you know, we are all on the same page, because one of us, you don't have more power than any of us, and it was addressed to you. If I got something from somebody, I would, I would send it to Mr. Heath and, and the board, right away, just so everybody's on the same page. So, that's what I'm asking for. So, I, if your feelings are hurt that we were, you know, it, it should have been sent to us. I mean, I shouldn't see it on Facebook, on your Facebook page before I see it, you know, before I see it in my email. So, I, I'll give you the policy, the bylaws, it's 0122.1. It would be a possibility, 0123, 0149, or 0173. And so, hopefully, everyone can have some ideas, and then we can discuss it at the next meeting, have it on the next agenda, just so we're not hashing it out.
I just want to, there's a point of clarification I want to make. I don't believe that there was any malice, Maggie, on your end, by not copying us. Hearing your explanation makes sense, and that, that you were trying to, you know, be cautious, even though the letter said CC, I get where you're coming from on that. I think just seeing it on social media, and then seeing that we were not CC'd in reality, was where like the confusion was, but I get, I totally understand what you're saying now. So, thank you for clarifying that, I appreciate that. I do want to just clarify that the original letter that, that was going to be executive orders, are we following them, are we not? Are we following challenged ones, or just ones with an injunction? So, I'm glad that we had that clarification tonight. I wish that would have happened prior to being contacted, you know, by the senator, but...
Is there anything else? At this time, we will move on to hearing of the public.
Our first speaker's Lynn Mazika.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Heath, Mr. Wade, again, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. When I'm shopping for clothes, there's often a three-way mirror in the dressing room. It's fun to see the infinite, infinite number of copies of me, but it's an illusion. I don't live in a world where everyone is just like me.
I'm sorry, can you please pause the time? Is there a problem?
No, I was just trying to explain the word "comedy," but, all right.
Thank you.
I'll explain what I was talking about.
I, I'm sorry, we, we have a speaker, and...
Yes, twice, you have her twice.
Yes, so there's, you're, you have the opportunity to speak on two different segments. Thank you. Ms. Payne? Ms. Muzika?
Thank you. Please continue.
But that's an illusion. I don't live in a world where everyone looks just like me. And I enjoy the diversity in this world. I encourage it and I encourage the inclusion of the diversity of our species. And I encourage each and every one of us to be treated equally. I oppose any policy that limits diversity, equity, and inclusion in our district. Thank you for the opportunity to express my opinion over comments from the audience.
I apologize for the disruption and thank you for your comments.
John Sanford.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Heath, Mr. Wade, again, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Before I get into my comments, I wanted to just say, a couple times this evening, we have heard the electorate as being referred to as a monolithic block. Be aware, we are not a monolithic block. Not all of us agree with the bigotry that's coming out of DC. However, last month, following my comments about nepotism, both Rose and Annie interrupted proceedings to tell me I had misinterpreted their comments and I should listen to the videos. So I did. While in closer review of the videos, it appears that Rose was ignorant of the concept of nepotism and how it might apply to her personal situation. Her comments were more in the vein of wanting to work with her father without being aware of the conflict of interest issue. That makes sense, he is her father. And he provided 40% of her total campaign budget, 7,000 out of 17,000. To quote Rose, "I know there are a lot of newsletters that my dad would share with me." As such, Mrs. Iapolo, please accept my apology for suggesting that you intentionally encouraged and expected your father to engage in unethical behavior or encourage the board to take advantage of such ethical lapses. Annie, on the other hand, clearly knows about nepotism. She opened her comments in January 2025 by saying that she was sure that Senator Serino would treat everyone fairly. She then went on to blatantly contradict herself and express the intent, given the chance, to engage in nepotism. While supporting Rose, she said, quote, "I think it's laughable to think that she wouldn't have some kind of special access to her father. I would hope that me, as a mother, that I would give my child first dibs before any other child if I was a legislator and they came to me with questions. Because that's your kid and you're going to treat them differently. I mean, I would hope that most parents would treat their kid differently than any other kid with access to them, and I see it as such a benefit. How are we not going to use that to our advantage?" End quote. Annie clearly appeared to expect Senator Serino to be unethical and encouraged the board to take, take advantage of that lapse in ethics. If that was her intent, then she clearly lacks the integrity and ethical compass we would want to see in our board members. If that was not her intent, then she owes Senator Serino and the board, as well as myself and the community, an apology for her ill-considered comments. Thank you.
I guess I will have a couple comments. I stand by what I said at that meeting. I do think there's an inherent difference when you're talking about your child versus somebody else that you don't know. And that's all the, the connection that I was trying to make with that. So the monthly attacks on me are, are a little different, but I just wanted to clarify that,
Our next speaker is Angela Beck.
Hello, my name is Angela Beck. This is the first meeting I've actually come to. I usually watch your meetings from home, but I'm here on a totally different topic. A lot of your comments and things you talked about tonight are very important, but at our house, there has been something going on that I want to address this evening. I have two children in this district. They are in fifth and sixth grade and I'm here tonight to talk to you about body shaming. As I look around the room, I don't see that any of us look exactly the same. We're all different. The children in our district, they're awful. We need to do better. My one son, he is 5'7", he is 200 pounds, he wears a size 11 shoe. He is in sixth grade. He has been made fun of to the point that he gets off the bus with the biggest tears I've ever seen. He is the nicest kid. Every teacher he's ever had has said they would like to have 40 of him. He would do anything for anyone. If you break down the side of the road, he's going to get out with his dad and he's going to help. If you're walking by our house, he's going to say hello to you. I have another child who is 5'4" and 110 pounds and very tall and lanky. He is made fun of because he's thin. As you can see, none of us are the same. And I don't understand what we can do as a parent and educator to stop the body shaming. I had a phone call from a mom two days ago. Her daughter refused to go to school because she lost her name. She was now called the fat girl. That's what they addressed her as. It took us three days to get that child back into school, but we did it. But she begged her school not to reprimand those children because it was going to make matters worse. That cannot happen. We have to do better. I'm asking you for guidance to help this stop. I will be at the next meeting, I believe at the end of the month, to talk about this again, but you also look to us for guidance. And I sit here tonight and I see so many arguments about so many things and we're supposed to be here for the students. My son went to school and the child who was bullying him was told to move. He chose to move one table away and the school allowed that. I knocked on that parent's door, I introduced myself, and I said, we have a problem here. The situation got worse. My child finally came up with an idea on his own. He moved nine tables away. He's made new friends and he did this all himself at the age of 12 because the school, I feel, failed him. We failed him. I need your help. I need these students to understand we're all the same. Will you help me with that?
Our next speaker is Bridget Henderson.
My name's Bridget. I'm here today to remind you of the bullying issue that has yet to be resolved. I've come to the conclusion that you're all too caught up in your own perspectives to see the simple changes that need to be made, changes that'll save lives. You aren't alone in this, I understand. I had a similar issue. When my daughter graduated from your high school, she weighed 89 pounds. Even with my multiple degrees and extensive nursing experience, I couldn't see the situation for what it was. My daughter's life was saved by a stranger. He pointed out that she was anorexic and there were places to get help. So I'm going to be the stranger that you so desperately need. I'm here to help you fix this problem. Myself and others have come up with a plan to help you enact meaningful change. We're having a community meeting about how to fix this and discuss the plan. Everyone's welcome to come. The meeting is on March 30th at 1:30 PM at Tommy Boys on Tyler Boulevard. I know all of you really do care and you're concerned about this and I look forward to seeing all of you there. I just ask one thing. You leave any prejudices you may have at home. It's bad form to be a bully and that's the very issue you're trying to address. Also, a side note, the person that saved my daughter's life wasn't the people that saw her every day in the school, dwindling away to nothing, dying a little every day. It was an actual stranger I had never met. In the two years that she was sitting there, turning into a stick, not one teacher voiced concern. I really think that this is because of the toxic culture of complacency and malignant neglect that you guys allow to thrive in your schools. Either teachers are afraid to say something or they just don't. Either they're burnt out or they just don't say anything for whatever reason. It's a broken system. I really think the entire culture is broken and it trickles down to the kids and these kids are miserable. They're picking on each other and you're allowing it, your system is allowing it to happen. There is no such thing, well, I'm sure there is, but consequences aren't always bad. When I was a senior in high school, I stopped caring, I stopped going to school, said something stupid to my teacher and I landed my last half of my senior year in in-school suspension. I promise you, without that in-school suspension and that important consequence, I wouldn't have graduated high school. I wouldn't have become a nurse. I wouldn't have helped save all the lives that I've saved. Consequences are a good thing. If you guys just take and blanket consequences, you do this, you get in trouble, that's your answer. There is no, there is no leniency. Like I got into a fight and I got jumped, I got suspended, they got suspended. It was fair. Just, you guys have everything in place that you need to make this work. It's just not being utilized correctly. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam President, before, before we keep moving.
Lindsey Wall.
Sorry, Mr. Wade. Before we keep moving, I want to thank these two parents who just spoke and just remember, I want to invite you all to the Cardinal Cafe on March 27th, during which we're going to be talking about school safety and bullying, so please do come. I, I heard you about your meeting on March 30th. I will try to make that as well, but I would really love to see you there too, if you can make it. It's at Paradigm, sorry, didn't mention that.
I'm sorry, where was that at?
Paradigm?
Oh, here it is.
Yeah, that's okay, that's all right. Sure.
What time?
I think it's at 6:00 PM.
Is it online?
We, we don't live stream those, but we do record them and then put them on the Cardinal TV channel, but it's so much better to have folks to talk to there. I'll be there, Mr. Heath will be there. We would love to have you.
6:30 is the time.
Thank you.
On that one. And we'll send out a flyer here probably in the next, maybe next week sometime with the information on that one.
I first would like to thank Lauren Marchaza for obviously spending a significant amount of time preparing for tonight's meeting and having a lot of constructive ideas and stuff that is promoting moving forward as a district and for our students. So thank you very much for doing that. Your presentation was phenomenal. I was very disappointed to see that there were two board members who are not for your proposal to participate in dialogue and learn how to work together better because it's much needed. Currently, there are board members who have made it extremely clear that they are anti-teacher and anti-student. They continuously pick apart policies and vote against them because of pronouns or language. Tonight, you voted against policies, you voted against the renewal of subscriptions that our teachers and students use every day for their education because they might include what you call woke material. That's insane and disgusting, so what you guys are doing by voting against this stuff and constantly belittling the other board members up there and posting about them and tearing them apart, you're creating an unsafe environment, not just for them, not just for the rest of the board and our superintendent and staff, but also teachers. We have teachers who are constantly receiving emails, degrading them and threatening them because of your rhetoric. It's wrong and should stop. I think it's interesting that tonight, DEI was brought up multiple times, the banning of diversity, equity, and inclusion, which is interesting because Jerry Serino, your dad, Rose, is co-sponsoring a bill to do just that, ban all DEI in K through 12 schools. But it's so weird because I swear, you also just, I thought I heard you anyways, I thought I just heard you ask for equity. Did you not? And also possibly, oh, in inclusion? But also you were doing that while advocating for diverse religious groups in the school. What? That's weird. Maybe it's because, do you know what DEI means, what it stands for? It's okay to be diverse. It's great to have equity and we should all be inclusive. You guys should try it.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jacqueline McCormick. Thank you. Our next speaker is Alex Fish.
He says, thank you. Thank you for being so. Testing. Madam, sorry. Madam President, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. Good evening. My name is Alex and I've lived in Mentor since 2007. I went to Brentmore for integrated preschool, Hopkins for K through 5, Memorial for 63 and Mentor High School. I was going to say this earlier, but I chose to pass and merge into here, so we should be keeping the Cardinal Nation newspaper separate from a prospective journalism course. As for Cardinal Nation, I was there for the inauguration of Cardinal Nation back in December 2021. And a concern regarding RTRI, what about weird scheduled days such as state testing days? And then the original reason I came to speak here was follow-up from January meeting and two parents that commented their concerns for their children. First, I would like to apologize in advance that I was unable to ask those questions last month due to the Senate Bill 1 testimony at the State House. Better late than never, I guess. I also stated that I was bullied to the point where I didn't want to be live anymore and where I attempted suicide on April 4, 2021, as a result of this and other factors, as well as a school walkout seven months later on November 8, 2021, which I spoke at. Following that, I came to ask, how are the ad hoc committees doing and are they going to be at each building? And then just, and then also from January's meeting, Madam President, just after the bullying discussion, but just before you went on hearing of the public, you mentioned something about a meeting with Mentor City Council, like a joint meeting or something. Is this going to be similar to the May 7, 2024 meeting? You can answer that later or after I speak. And then, following Mrs. Marchaza's presentation during unfinished business, thank you for that Braver Angels presentation and, and as well as thank you to our Mentor Police Officers and SRO Skelly and especially for them being on standby for the Mentor Schools Board meetings. Lastly, Madam President, since I'm addressing anything and everything to you, thank you for responding to my email from last week following clarification to a general board policy, as well as thank you for being a brave and fearless leader and for your professionalism and thank you for staying within compliance with laws, policies, et al. Thank you and let's have a strong finish of third quarter and have a safe, happy, and healthy spring break. Thank you and have a good night and go Cards.
Mr. Fish, to answer your question, the council, the Board of Education Joint Council meeting would look similar to the one that we had in previous years. And do we have a set date on that yet? Is, I know you had posed a date to council and we were waiting for that.
I still haven't heard back from them, yeah. So we're still waiting to hear back on the date on that. And, and then one other quick answer to your question, Alex. The ad hoc committee is not meeting at each building, but we're bringing administrators from different buildings to the group so that we can discuss things that way.
Not seeing Ms. Flag. That concludes the public participation. No.
All right, we, we had proposed a possible executive session that we are going to be withdrawing. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some of?
Second. Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Jesslyn?
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.